Over to you.
Good evening. I will now call this public hearing of Thursday, April 25th, 2021. Counsel, for the purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. To ensure that quorum is maintained throughout the evening and the meeting, please let the clerk know if you're leaving. This meeting will be convened by electronic means as authorized under the Order of the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General of the Province of British Columbia Emergency Program Act, Updated Ministerial Order Number M192. And as such, council members are participating by phone. And as Chair of this meeting, I am also participating by phone. Please note, if my connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we will recess the meeting until my connection is restored. If council loses connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll need to recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council loses connection during the voting process, we will have staff on hand to facilitate getting you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. Members of the public can also listen to the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be tweeted out by the Van City Clerk on Twitter. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Lastly, and following an updated guidance issued on February 10th, 2021, in-person participation for local government meetings and public hearings is not permitted under the provincial health order. Or sorry, the provincial health officer order on gathering and events. Therefore, speakers who will be providing comments to council will be by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence for civic business from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. this evening. Counselor Carr?
Here.
Counselor DeGenova?
Present.
Counselor Frye is in the chair, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Swanson?
Here.
Counselor Hardwick?
Present.
Counselor Weeb?
Present.
Counselor Boyle?
Present.
Counselor Domonado? Counselor Blythe?
Inform me, she'll be on in a few moments.
And Counselor Kirby Young?
Present.
The public hearing has quorummed, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk. We acknowledge that we are on the traditional and unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh nations. We thank them for having cared for this land and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to make a, take a moment to recognize the immense contributions of the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Before we begin, I have some announcements. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are residents of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter at VanCityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comment. This link will also be tweeted out. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next. Finally, I also want to note that the City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last names, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi-judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speaker list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. So, starting off with CD1 text amendment, 1280 Barrard Street, formerly 1262 to 1290 Barrard Street. Do any members of council wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item? All right, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Reliance Properties Limited to amend CD1 Comprehensive Development District for 1280 Barrard Street by altering the land use provisions under Section 2.2 to allow a wider range of commercial uses. No correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker list, and we see the public comments till 5:00 p.m. today.
Thank you, Clerk. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445-pound to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be tweeted out and available on the live stream. We have Austin Norrie, rezoning planner, rezoning center, planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application.
Hold on, just sharing my screen now. Good evening, council. My name is Austin Norrie, rezoning planner for this text amendment. Staff are prepared to make a presentation. If it's council's preference, this presentation can be waived.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Chair Frye?
Yes, Counselor Carr.
Yes, I note that there are, there were no registered speakers. If there are no speakers on the line, I'm prepared to move to waive this presentation.
Do we have any, any councillors wishing to see the presentation, or can we waive this and move? Seeing no...
Move to second, waiving the presentation.
Okay. So, can I get all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any questions from council to staff that, that we will waive this presentation? Are there any questions from councils to staff? Is the applicant team here to speak to the application? I see a note that there is no presentation. Anything from the applicant team?
This is Austin Norrie on the line, rezoning planner for this item. Yes, the applicant, Reliance Properties, is on the line, and they can just acknowledge themselves, they are present.
Yes, this is Joanna Kwan from Reliance Properties.
Thank you, Joanna Kwan.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicants? Please note that this is the only opportunity of council to ask questions of the applicant. And seeing as we have no, nobody from the public to speak to this... Clerk, do I, do we have to do the phone-in and...
It is the clerk here, Deputy Mayor. I do see a councillor on the queue. But yes, we do have to ask three times for the public because someone may just phone in.
Okay, thank you, Clerk, and I, my apologies, Counselor Weeb, I didn't see you on the queue there. But before, point of privilege, Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, I'm just having a quick technical issue. Could you add me to the queue for questions as well, please?
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Counselor Weeb?
Yeah, my question's proponent. What type of retail uses are you hoping to achieve if this is passed tonight?
May I?
Joanne, yeah, you can answer that question. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal here. The, the change of use is actually, the use is actually not about the retail. The retail currently is actually, there is a restaurant space and there is a car dealership. What we're looking at is the office uses to open up the opportunity for, for example, educational use. That could be school, like adult schools, technical school, that kind of thing.
Is that, so that's the main one that you were looking at here that wasn't included? I'm just wondering, because we do have this list of different types. So I'm just wondering, what are the types of spaces that we're missing in our permitting that you would like to see in the future to be able to be more flexible to attract the tenants you're hoping to attract?
Yes. For example, if you look at item E under service uses, in the original rezoning document, it was limited to a certain type. And what we're looking for is under-service use when it's all-inclusive. It will include schools such as arts or self-improvement, business school or other trade school. So that's, that's what the main focus that we have.
Okay, and then question to staff. Is this a request we think we're going to see a lot come to council? And is school use something that we've looked at, including in the future when we're doing this work?
Hello, council. It's Michael Naylor, Senior Rezoning Planner. This approach to bylaws is one that we have started taking all CD1s that have commercial use, particularly in the ground level or anywhere, actually. And we found that we need to make the bylaws more resilient to different types of uses. So these are the broad categories, and it actually is very open. And even if we add new uses to the zoning development bylaw, the, the, these CD1s that have this will be able to access those uses. So it's actually quite wide open with this. And, and we, we started doing this with all new CD1s with commercial, and we do get requests from existing ones that, that, that will need it.
Okay, and do we see that, I mean, obviously, we're crossing off limited to childcare, limited to billiards halls and other things. Were, were those in there to try to support recognizing that we're losing a lot of those spaces? Or were they just there as some of it's been there for years? And it just hasn't been changed over kind of the transformation and updates to these bylaws?
Yeah, so over time, we have treated CD1s as being very specific to what the applicants have requested. So we tended not to put uses in unless the applicants requested it. But that really doesn't work over the long term because these are buildings that could take a number of different uses. So the approach we have now is much, is much more flexible. Yeah.
Okay, so this will allow easier change of use in the future and easier opportunities for different tenants to be able to tenant these type of spaces?
Exactly, that's, that's the case. Now, I should point out that they're still subject to guidelines. So we do have some uses, such as a canvas retail store, which is one where there are very particular requirements in guidelines. So any proposal for that would, to get a permit, would still have to abide by the guidelines of which there are distancing requirements and whatnot.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate those answers.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thank you. I also have a question for the applicant. And my sense in reading this was that it was specifically the institutional or school use that was sought. And I'm wondering, because it helps to, I think, as a councillor, to understand where the demand is coming from the city. And I'm wondering if you have a particular tenant that has sparked this interest? Or if you're able to share that at this point? I'm interested to get a sense of where the demand's coming from or who's looking for space.
We, we have inquiry from a technical school. But I was, it, it's an initial inquiry, so I won't be able to share that information. But it is a local school that is currently not in downtown Vancouver.
Okay. And you felt that that inquiry was sufficient enough? But is that what, that, that inquiry specifically that was driving this request for change of use?
Yes, our leasing agent feel quite strong that the inquiry is a good addition to the Vancouver downtown market. And so we, we also feel that in this area, it is a very strong candidate for, for our project, for our site. Actually, if you, that's in the, after the COVID-19, after the pandemic, there are more and more discussion on different type of uses of office space. For example, lab, kind of a medical field, that kind of thing. So by what, echoing what Michael said earlier, by amending this, it will allow more flexibility for, it's kind of a slightly different business type coming to downtown in the near future.
That, that's really helpful. That's what I was getting at in terms of the demand, which, there was more type of demand that, that had been unmet, or if the demand was shifting away from sort of the traditional office use. And this will be some of the result of sort of the work from home and it, you know, and a shift over to other kinds of uses, so.
Yeah.
That, that insights helpful. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. Counselor Boyle, for five minutes.
Thanks, I also had the same question as Counselor Kirby Young, so appreciate being the answer. My other question, just to clarify to staff. Is, is this a, proposing a blanket change across this whole zone? Or is this just a change to this particular site?
Thank you for your question, Counselor. This pertains to just this specific CD1, CD1-587.
Okay, great. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, those are all of my questions. Thanks, Chair Frye.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle. All right, so seeing as we have nobody on the speakers' list, if there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445-pound to get on the list. This phone number will be tweeted out and available on the live stream. Clerk, we have no speakers on the line?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. There is somebody on the line, but we understand they're for item number four. So no, there is no one for this item on the line.
Okay, so I'm going to do one more call-out for any speakers wishing to phone in. And we will take a five-minute recess to see if any calls are received during this time. And that means that we will come back at 6:25. Thank you.
This is the clerk, Deputy Mayor, and we have no speakers at the second call.
Okay, and then this will be my third and final call for speakers to this item. They wish to call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445-pound to get on the list before we close the list. And...
It is the clerk here, Deputy Mayor. I'm just waiting to see if anybody has joined. If you could give me a moment.
Thank you, Clerk.
No, no one on the line for this item.
Okay, so in that case, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hear any closing comments, any further questions of staff, and to make a decision. I see Counselor Kirby Young on the line.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. There's no other councillors on the queue. I'm happy to move the recommendation.
Second, Counselor DeGenova.
Moved by Counselor Kirby Young, seconded by Counselor DeGenova. Any further comments, Counselor Kirby Young?
No, thank you, Chair.
Okay, does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Do staff have any closing comments?
Staff have no further comments. Thank you.
And do council have any questions for staff? Okay, so here we go. I'll move us to a voting queue and... Clerk, can we move to a voting queue? I'm a little rusty on the crest on...
You're ready for the votes, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, we can call the vote. And...
Chair Frye?
Yes, Counselor DeGenova? Would you like a vote assist?
In favor, and also, if I may, on another point of privilege, just note that I cannot connect to my remote desktop. So if perhaps the clerks could check and make sure it's turned on in chambers.
Sure thing. And counsel, if the clerks can check Counselor DeGenova's remote desktop, please. And Counselor Domonado, you haven't voted.
Yes, can I get a vote assist in favor, please?
Okay, and that passes with no one on opposition. Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, Clerk, for helping me with this. Now, we'll just wait while rezoning staff, we need three to five minutes between applications in order to provide adequate cleaning in the shared presentation meeting room. So we'll just take another recess for five minutes, coming back at 6:33. Cue. Cue.
Move to wave the presentation.
Move to wave...
Second, Counselor DeGenova.
Moved by Counselor Carr, seconded by Counselor DeGenova. Are there any questions from council to staff? I see nobody on the queue.
Sorry, it's the clerk here, Deputy Mayor. Could we have a vote on that last motion?
Oh, I'm...my apologies, yes, sorry. Can we get a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? With no opposition, so we'll wave the presentation. And I did ask if there was any questions from council of staff, which I don't see. The applicant team is here to speak to the application. There is no presentation. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicants? Please note, council, this is your only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. And I see nobody on the queue. And this is where we would hear from the public, but since there are no speakers for this item wishing to speak to council, and they... You do have the opportunity to call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code... This looks like an error. I believe it's participant code 42339, to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. I'm sorry, clerk, can I get a clarification on that number? I have two different numbers in my script for the participant code.
I'm just checking. I'm double-checking that. Just give me a moment, please. Deputy Mayor, it is participant code 1061445, hashtag, or pound.
Thank you, clerk. Okay, so once again, if there's any speaker... Anyone who wishing to speak to this item, they can call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445, pound, to get on the list. We will take a quick recess to see if anybody does wish to call in, so we'll come back in five minutes. That'll be at 6:42, council. Five-minute break.
Privilege, I'm here. Chair Frye.
Thank you, Counselor DeGenova, Counselor Boyle. Okay, we do have quorum. Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
I'm just checking. And for this second call, there are no callers.
Okay, thank you, clerk. This is the third and last call for any additional speakers. If there are any other speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445, hashtag, to get on the list before the close of this list. Phone number has been tweeted out, is...and is available on the live stream. So this is the final call for any speakers to item number two, which is 4825 Laurel Street. Clerk, do we have any speakers for this final call?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just double-checking. And I confirm there are no speakers on the line for this item.
Okay, then, we'll be now closing the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking any further questions of staff, and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
Hi there, no, we're good, thank you.
Thank you. Do staff have any closing comments?
Thank you, council. Staff have no closing comments.
Thank you. Do council have any questions for staff? Counselor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Deputy Mayor. I actually don't have any questions, but if there are no questions, I'm prepared to move the recommendations.
I see nobody else on the queue, so moved by Counselor Carr.
Counselor Boyle. Second, Counselor DeGenova.
I heard Counselor Boyle on the queue first, so seconded by Counselor Boyle. Clerk, if we can move to a voting queue, please? And we'll call the vote.
Point of privilege?
Yes, Counselor DeGenova.
I see a remote being into my laptop right now, so if I could get a vote assist, please, in favor?
Of course.
Thank you.
And that passes with none in opposition. Thank you, council. Thank you, clerk. We will take a quick break to allow staff to prepare the... For our next item, which is item number three. And I can't find item number three in my script just yet, but we'll just take a quick three-minute break and reconvene at 6:48. Moved by Counselor Dominetto. Seconded by Counselor Hardwick. All in favor, say aye.
Yay.
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 Uh, any opposed? Okay, that passes. We'll be moving, we'll be waiving the presentation, and we will be going from, are there any questions, uh, from council to staff or the applicants? Council, please note, this is your only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. I see Counselor Kirby Young on the queue. Counselor Kirby Young for five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have one question, and that's why, um, are these specifically limited to being static signs, given that it's a performing arts venue? And I think of things like Ballet BC and, and other groups that perform there that's so visual, and I think of different, um, cultural institutions around the world where sometimes you can see a little bit of footage that inspires people to want to participate and attend a live performance, and I'm wondering why the proposal is just for static images?
This is a question for staff or the applicant?
I believe they're one of the same.
I believe so too, but do you think this sign company's here?
I can speak to this, and it's Krista from Vancouver Civic Theaters. There is a capability to have video playing on it. When we, um, put the application in, it is for static signage, but, um, it, it does have that capability. So if a group had come forward, say like Ballet BC, and had something that they wanted to present, um, that could be, um, definitely utilized.
Okay, so thanks for that. Maybe I'll direct to a second question. Appreciate that, Krista. Maybe I'll direct to a second question specifically to staff then. If this, um, is approved as is, I read the language, we were only approving static, so it would preclude, even though the sign has the capability, that the approval would only enable the use of static images and not moving footage. Is that right?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Kirby Young, for your question. This is Karen Wong, rezoning planner, so I'll be responding to this question. Uh, that's correct. The images would be just for static electronic signs, uh, so they'd be on 10 seconds on, and then it would transition in less than one second.
So could we, is it possible, um, hearing what the representative of Civic Theaters is saying, to provide more flexibility and to amend this? Um, say for example, in clauses, they're saying electronic static images and say electronic static or moving images? To provide the venue with that flexibility?
Uh, currently, the sign bylaw doesn't permit for any video. Uh, we allow for electronic static image signs, uh, through the sign bylaw amendment. So we'd have to go through a proposal, um, to consider it, but we don't currently have any videos in the city.
Okay, so maybe I can do a follow-up question then. So a bylaw change would obviously be much more pervasive in terms of encompassing many different locations, some which could have different site conditions potentially or residential impact. But again, in, in the case of this one, sometimes we, we make exceptions, as we just did with the previous rezoning, for uses, um, on a particular site. So could that be done here? And I guess I'm asking the question a different way, as opposed to a pervasive change to the entire sign bylaw.
Uh, okay, thanks for that clarification. Again, this is Karen Wong, rezoning planner. Uh, so we could, um, we are currently working on phase two, which is a sign bylaw review, and so we could consider, um, that as part of that review.
And what is the timing anticipated on that?
Uh, we don't, right now staffer, um, it's currently been delayed due to COVID-19, and staff have been working on other staff priorities. Uh, so there's, we're working on the, uh, the timeline for that.
Okay, the last question. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Counselor, this is Teresa O'Donnell. Um, we can take a look at that, uh, if it's the desire of the council for sure. Uh, these, we would need to check with traffic and transportation to make sure that we're not introducing a traffic hazard. Uh, typically, the, our transportation planners don't like moving images because it is a driving, uh, distraction, but, but we're happy to explore that on our, on our next update.
Okay, so follow up, um, Teresa, then, is it, would your recommendation be, I'm trying to strike the balance here between this and providing maximum opportunity to get as many people back inside our civic venues and supporting our arts community? Once we can do that with the pandemic, would your recommendation be to approve this tonight and then wait? And I guess we're looking at indeterminate period of time before Civic Theaters could run something like a moving image of Ballet BC.
Yes, I would, uh, if it, if it's the desire of the council, if we could approve this tonight so that they could, uh, so they can get moving on their sign installation, that would be great. And then, as soon as we can take this back through and get some feedback from, um, from our transportation department, we'll be happy to move this right along.
Okay, so it'll be best approved tonight, and then I could follow up outside of the hearing process. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to miss an opportunity. I don't want to hold up and delay, but since there are the questions, but I don't want to miss an opportunity here either. Thank you. Chair?
Oh, uh, my apologies. Sorry, uh, Counselor Dominado, and I've, uh, let me just start timer.
Uh, thanks, Chair, and, uh, just a quick question. Um, I'm just curious if, um, this proposal would have been run or shared with, uh, the Vancouver Civic Theaters Advisory Body in advance of coming to public hearing, just as liaison to that advisory body? And I don't recall, um, but I just, I was curious if there had been any feedback around this.
This is Krista from Vancouver Civic Theaters, um, again. And, um, really, this proposal's taken quite a while. I think it did go to the advisory board back in 2019, um, but because of the bylaw exemption application process, it's taken quite a while to get to this point. But I, I know that the board has been briefed on it.
Okay. And do we have any, um, any indication of feedback at the time? I know that they're going through a visioning exercise right now around some sort of blue skying around Civic Theaters, but I'm just curious if, if you had any feedback at that time?
No, I think that they were, um, happy with the progress and, and refreshing it. I mean, the area where we are, everything is building up around it. So for the, the Queen Elizabeth Theater complex, it's so important, you know, with the addition of Brown Social House on the Plaza, to really stay relevant with that area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dominado. Um, Counselor DeGenova, five.
Yes, thanks very, very much. Uh, my question, uh, to staff is about our dark sky policy and light pollution. Just in, in follow-up to Counselor Kirby Young's question earlier, um, does this right now, uh, as we're looking at it and understanding we're looking at this as in, does it fit the policy, uh, that we have in front of us? Does it specifically fit the policy right now, um, as, as well as it can for light pollution, dark sky?
Uh, thank you, Council, for that question. Uh, this is Karen Wong, rezoning planner. Uh, that's correct. So yes, uh, one of the guiding principles of the sign bylaw is to minimize light pollution. So we have a number of provisions that speak to that, and the sign will meet those sign bylaw requirements. So if there's any concerns that staff do receive, uh, we would work with the operator to mitigate the impacts.
Okay, thanks. And just because it was asked as to whether or not something could be amended specifically, um, and I understand we, council does have that power to, to amend outside of specific policies sometimes, uh, depending on how far outside of policy it goes. Uh, my question is, is in looking at the policy and reviewing that, will video and how it conflicts with, um, light pollution and dark sky be something that staff will be working on in, in the future? And could then this specific, um, amendment again come before council? If, um, if that was something that staff felt was, um, was best suited? If new policy does appear, there's nothing saying that, uh, we couldn't again amend the sign bylaw. Is that correct?
Uh, thank you for your question. Again, this is Karen Wong, rezoning planner. Uh, so just to clarify your question, it's if the sign bylaw were to change, would this application have to come back and, uh, meet those requirements? Is that sort of what you're asking?
Yes, specifically for 688 Hamilton. I should have been more specific about that, my apologies. Uh, but there's nothing precluding that, this, this specific application from seeking that if the policy changes at a later time and the bylaw is updated again. That's what I was asking, to include video.
That is correct. It could come back as a simple amendment.
Great. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thanks, Counselor DeGenova. Uh, I see no further questions, uh, from council, so thank you, staff, for answering those.
Happy to move this, if you, you'd like. I can't get on the queue, my apologies. If you could put me on the queue, then that's-
Actually, Counselor DeGenova, we're just going to do a check for any, any questions.
Oh, of course.
Uh, from the public, sorry. Um, uh, if there are any, uh, speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. The phone number has also been tweeted out, and it's available on the live stream. Clerk, do we have any, uh, speakers on the line?
I'm just checking, Deputy Mayor, and I am being told we have nobody on the line right now for this item.
Okay, so, uh, we will do one-third final call for speakers. Uh, and if there are any people who wish to speak to this item and call council, please call one, toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. We're going to take a five-minute break, uh, and come back at 7:06, uh, to close out on this item and hear any speakers should they call in. Thanks, Council. Come back at 7:06. Face check and see if we've got you all back. Oh, you're all back. All right. And let me refresh myself on the script here. Um, so Clerk, do we have any speakers on the line to this?
Deputy Mayor, I'm checking. I'm hearing none for the second call.
Okay, um, we'll take one final and third call out for any additional speakers. If there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound to get on the list. That phone number has also been tweeted out, and it's available on the live stream. So this is the final call for any speakers. Clerk, do we have any speakers on the line?
Just give me a moment, please, Deputy Mayor. No, no further speakers.
Okay, so seeing as we have no, uh, additional speakers, uh, we will now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, uh, asking any further questions of staff and to make a decision. Uh, does the applicant have any closing comments?
Mr. Chair, we don't have any closing comments at this point.
Thank you. Uh, do staff have any closing comments?
Uh, no, we don't.
Thank you. Uh, and do council have any questions for staff? I see Counselor DeGenova on the queue. Counselor DeGenova, closing questions to staff.
Perhaps I was just too quick on the queue. Well, I'll take myself off for, I was on the queue to move forward with debate and decision. My apologies.
Okay, so we have no questions of staff. Uh, we'll now make a decision on this application. Do we have a mover?
So moved, Counselor DeGenova.
Okay, can, seconded.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Counselor Kirby Young. Okay, moved by Counselor DeGenova, seconded by Counselor Kirby Young. Um, Counselor DeGenova, did you want to speak to this?
Just wanted to speak really briefly because of some of the, uh, the questions that were asked earlier before we called for speakers. Uh, I wanted to say that I think that it is so important that we look at our policies and we move forward with them, but also here at public hearing, because we do sit in a quasi-judicial, uh, body, that we, uh, consider the policy that we have right now. I understand it was, um, actually former Counselor, uh, Elizabeth Fall, who was not only, uh, very involved, uh, and, uh, worked for several years, for decades, in arts and culture, uh, in theater companies and with lighting companies, uh, worldwide, but, uh, she really helped me to understand the- but, uh, she really helped me to understand the importance of light pollution, dark sky, and, uh, how that, uh, really needs to be considered and how we shape our policy. That being said, I think that we have to do all that we can to help the arts and, uh, really appreciated the questions of some of my colleagues, uh, in asking about that. I think that it really, as we look at updating our policy, how can we do this to minimize light pollution, but at the same time, um, and not distract drivers? I think that that was, uh, that was a well-made point, but at the same time, to help in any way we can, uh, arts and cultural organizations or companies, um, to make sure that they're getting their message out there, especially, um, when we're through the pandemic and hopefully people can gather again, uh, for some of these larger events. Uh, until then, uh, arts and cultural communities doing a great job being as creative as they possibly can, uh, in finding other ways to gather remotely. So I just wanted to say that and I will be supportive of this, um, moving forward because it does comply with policy, but I'm also open-minded to, uh, considering this if this application were to come back, uh, if new policy, uh, is something the council decides on in the future. Thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, I'll be really brief. Um, I, I'm happy to see sort of new signs moving forward. I think it's really important to signal to people what's happening in the city and what's inside these buildings and entice them to go inside. Um, I am so looking forward to supporting arts and culture when we can all gather again and having strong audiences is gonna be really fundamental to recovery. Um, I would know that these signs are, I mean, first of all, in terms of the area, we've got the new bag coming in, uh, you've got the library, um, the Amazon build, um, it's going to be, I think, um, a really great, um, cultural destination, uh, you know, again, once everybody can sort of gather together post-pandemic. And I'd also know that these signs are at, um, they're for human scale and they're at eye level, um, and I do think it would be a real opportunity. So I'm, I'm interested and I appreciate, um, the comments from Teresa O'Donnell, uh, our Acting Director of Planning, um, to sort of take a look at the opportunity because I do think that it can be accomplished without a big issue of, of light pollution. We're not dealing with a large residential area here and I don't think that the amount of lumens or the illumination would be substantively different, um, but it's certainly, you know, just like the arts is visceral and moving, I certainly think that the signs would have an opportunity to convey that and it's good to hear that they do have the technical capability to, um, to do that if that's something we can move forward in the future. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. All right, counsel, seeing, uh, no further questions or comments on the queue, we'll call a vote. And that passes with none in opposition. Okay, thank you, counsel, that was, uh, we're moving pretty quickly here. Um, we're gonna take a quick break and allow, uh, rezoning staff some time, uh, to do some cleaning in the shared presentation meeting room. Uh, so we'll come back in five minutes at 7:18. On item number four, amendments to the zoning and redevelopment bylaw to increase social housing in the RM4 and RM3A zoning districts. So we'll come back at 7:18. Thanks, counsel.
Thanks very much, uh, welcome back, counsel, and, uh, deep appreciation to, uh, the Deputy Mayor for sharing. Thanks very much, Counselor Frye. Uh, we're now looking at, um, item number four, which is the amendments to the zoning and redevelopment bylaw to increase social housing in the RM4 and RM3A zoning districts. Uh, just asking first, does any, do any council members wish to declare a conflict of interest on this item?
Yes. Mayor Stewart?
Yes.
Um, I will be declaring a code of conduct issue, um, for tonight's last item.
Just a, yeah.
Conflict of interest, I'm an owner of RM4 property and currently there's an open petition, um, on me that's currently at the B.C. Supreme Court and so out of an abundance of caution, I will be stepping away from this vote.
Okay, thank you so much. And so, uh, this is the last item on the agenda, so I think, uh, you can log out of the meeting. Um, okay, so, uh, the clerk can now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
There is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to allow development of up to six stories in the RM3A and the RM4 and RM4N zoning districts, where a hundred percent of the residential floor area is developed as social housing or social housing in conjunction with a child daycare facility. The following correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and we see the public comments. Fourteen pieces of correspondence in support, twenty-three pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 4:00 p.m. today.
Thanks so much, uh, let's see here, so, um, so if there's any speakers to this item, it's the regular number 1-833-353-8610, code 1061445 hashtag to get on the list. Uh, we have Sarah Ellis from the, uh, Housing Policy Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability team that's on the phone, uh, to present the application.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
All right, I'll share my screen. Uh, can you see my screen?
We can and I'll just check the public side to make sure that it's on the orange cone. But feel free to proceed.
All right, good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm Sarah Ellis, Planner in Housing Policy and Regulations in Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability. Today, I'm here with the PDS team with an application from the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to increase social housing in the RM3A and the RM4 and RM4N zoning districts. First, a bit of context on the need for housing that's affordable to renters in Vancouver. This chart shows a breakdown of rents as a share of incomes among Vancouver renter households from the last census. It shows 50,000 renter households in Vancouver paying over a third of their income on rent and of those, nearly 20,000 spending over half of their income on rent. We also know of the additional housing need among residents experiencing homelessness and living in private SRO housing. And we also hear from many renters facing intersecting housing challenges, including renters who are black, indigenous, or people of color, two-S, LGBTQ+, single parents, and seniors. In Vancouver, social housing delivered by the community housing sector is an important part of the solution to creating housing that's affordable to current and future renters. First, I'll give a bit of clarity on the language that I'll be using in this presentation. I'll be using the term "social housing" since this is the term that's used in the Vancouver Charter and our bylaws, but we know there are other common terms that are used as well, like nonprofit housing, non-market housing, or community housing. Social housing provides secure rental and co-op housing that's nonprofit-owned and/or operated, typically targeting incomes under 50,000 for singles and 80,000 for families. Some social housing providers also give services geared towards specific communities like indigenous residents, seniors, singles, or families. We've heard from our partners in the community housing sector and other levels of government that creating new social housing involves several challenges. First, we've learned that many existing social housing providers are facing increasing costs to maintain and upgrade their aging properties, especially with the expiry of long-term senior government operating agreements. Many are considering their options for the future, including the option of accessing new government funding to redevelop and expand. Second, we've learned that new housing must be financially feasible or it will not get built and that many ingredients are required to support feasible developments, including land, senior government funding, and adequate height and density. Finally, we've learned from our partners that a social housing project with pre-approved zoning has a much better chance of accessing senior government funding early in the development process and can also help with reducing the overall cost of construction. This can make a big difference for the viability and affordability of new developments. Now, I'll move on to the details of the proposed zoning amendments. What's being proposed today are amendments to the zoning and development bylaw to allow development of up to six stories in the RM3A and RM4 and RM4N zoning districts, where a hundred percent of the residential floor area is developed as social housing or social housing in conjunction with a child daycare facility. The intention of these zoning amendments is to provide pre-approved zoning for social housing projects to help them secure funding as early as possible, to expedite the development process for new and renewed social housing in these areas, and to implement direction in existing community plans and policies in these areas. This is a map showing the zoning areas where the proposed changes would apply. The RM3A and RM4 zoning districts are made up of mid-rise apartment areas in several neighborhoods across the city. This next map includes blue dots representing existing social housing in the zoning areas RM3A and RM4. You can see that these areas are home to just over sixty existing social housing properties on nonprofit or co-op-owned land, largely in Grandview Woodland, Mount Pleasant, Marpole, and East Kitts, but also scattered across a couple other neighborhoods. These properties make up just over a third of Vancouver's nonprofit-owned housing stock, constructed in previous decades under previous senior government funding programs. One thing to note is that social housing only makes up less than 2% of all residential properties in these areas, with the rest being private market ownership and rental housing. Looking at existing policy in these zones. Existing zoning in RM3A and RM4 already allows residential development up to three to four stories as a conditional approved use without a rezoning. Many of these areas are also covered by recent community plans with direction for additional height and density for the creation and renewal of social housing, including the Marpole, Canby Corridor, and Grandview Woodland plans. These plans also enable rental apartments up to six stories via rezoning process in several areas. Longstanding citywide policy also supports expanding opportunities for affordable housing in all neighborhoods across the city. Now, getting into the details on the proposed zoning changes. The proposed zoning amendments allow height up to 65 feet and density up to 2.5 FSR without a rezoning for buildings proposing a hundred percent of floor area as social housing, residential floor area, with consideration for reduced setbacks where necessary. These rules do not take away the ability of a housing provider to seek a rezoning to achieve higher density than this for their development. This will remain an option in these zones. New guidelines for social housing in these zones will provide additional guidance on form and design, affordability in family units, and responding to area-specific design considerations. On the topic of affordability, all new social housing in the city is required to meet or exceed the minimum requirement in the zoning and development bylaw of 30% of units affordable to incomes at or below housing income limits. The new guidelines encourage deeper affordability and replacement of existing affordability where applicable, contingent on funding. We are seeing that where funding is available, new social housing can deliver deeper affordability than the minimum requirement. Now, I'll go over our public consultation and what we heard. The proposed zoning amendments were identified to counsel in June 2020 as Vancouver planned COVID-19 recovery actions. Following this, staff launched public consultation in fall 2020. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions on in-person gatherings, the city conducted public and stakeholder consultation virtually using the following modalities: a Talk Vancouver survey in September 2020, four virtual neighborhood workshops in November 2020, an online open comment feedback forum on Shape Your City, and virtual meetings with stakeholders and the City of Vancouver renters and seniors advisory committees. I'll summarize what we heard over the next few slides. The Talk Vancouver survey ran for three weeks in September and received over 2,200 responses with roughly 50/50 representation of homeowners and renters and co-op residents. Among survey respondents, 81% agreed that the city should encourage new non-market housing through added density and other city tools, and 77% supported the proposed zoning changes. And seventy-seven percent supported the proposed zoning changes. In order to ensure that we received neighborhood-specific perspectives even without in-person open houses. Staff also hosted four virtual neighborhood sessions in November with a focus on Mount Pleasant, Marple, Kits, and Grandview Woodland. These sessions were advertised broadly over social media, housing Vancouver mailing lists, and via direct outreach to existing neighborhood organizations. The four sessions received over eighty participants, half renters and half owners. Over the four sessions, the majority of participants told us they think social housing is important for supporting diverse, vibrant, and affordable neighborhoods. Several participants even told us that new social housing would help them to stay in their communities and should be enabled across the city. We also heard from a small number of residents who were concerned about the impact of higher buildings on views and their neighborhood look and feel. Staff also sought feedback on the proposed zoning changes um with the City of Vancouver Renters Advisory Committee and the Seniors Advisory Committee Housing Subcommittee. The Renters Advisory Committee submitted a formal letter to Mayor and Council in support of the zoning amendments. From both groups, we heard support for the proposed changes and interest in expanding them across the city. Both groups are especially supportive of providing affordability to meet the needs of low and moderate income households. And the Seniors Advisory Committee urged the city to consider the need for more accessible units in social housing across the city. Finally, staff engaged with B C Housing and C M H C and representatives of the community housing sector, including the B C Nonprofit Housing Association, Co-op Housing Federation of B C and their members. Through this consultation, we heard that nonprofit social housing providers are mission-aligned with the goal of delivering long-term affordable housing and protecting current and future residents. They told us that new social housing operated on a not-for-profit basis will become even more affordable over time. And is an important investment in the current and future affordability of the city. The sector has told us that they believe these zoning changes are an important first step, but have also urged us to consider adopting this approach across the city. And to consider that additional density may be needed to support the viability of new development in some cases. Before closing, I'll highlight responses to several questions that we received from council. First, we had a question asking why these amendments are only being proposed in the R M three A and R M four zoning districts and not citywide. As previously noted, the intent of these amendments is to be relatively quick actions to implement direction in existing community plans and policy. In order to support social housing providers in these areas looking to access senior government funding. The upcoming Broadway Plan and Vancouver Plan will be looking at more comprehensive approaches to enabling social housing in other neighborhoods across the city. We also received a question asking whether these new zoning amendments could lead to Dem evictions in existing market rental buildings in these areas. First, it's important to clarify, only nonprofits delivering a hundred percent social housing are eligible to access these new zoning amendments. A for-profit market rental owner could not redevelop their site under these rules. We have heard interest from the community housing sector in acquiring existing rental buildings in order to protect existing tenants and the long-term affordability of the private market rental stock. However, we don't anticipate that these specific zoning amendments will lead to widespread purchases of existing market rental sites, given the cost of land and availability of funding. However, if a nonprofit did purchase a market rental site with the intent to redevelop as social housing. They would need to follow the city's non-market tenant relocation and protection policy, which requires all tenants to be offered the option of a permanent affordable replacement unit at thirty percent of their income. Finally, as a follow-up to the previous question, staff also received a question from council about how the tenant relocation and protection policy for non-market housing would apply in the specific case of existing market tenants in properties that are acquired by nonprofits and being redeveloped as social housing. Where those tenants do not wish to be income tested in order to determine the affordability of the replacement unit offer as per the policy. Throughout the tenant relocation and protection policy process, staff work closely with nonprofit applicants to work out the best possible outcomes for each tenant. While it's not explicit in the policy, we would expect that in a situation where a tenant turned down the offer of a permanent affordable replacement unit because they were not open to be income tested. Compensation would be provided instead. In conclusion, staff recommend approval of the amendments to the R M three A and the R M four and R M four N district schedules to allow a hundred percent social housing up to six stories. And the associated guidelines for social housing. This concludes the presentation, and we welcome questions from council.
Thanks so much for the presentation. Uh, one, two, three, four, six counselors on for questions. Just a reminder, we uh to council, again, it's uh totally your right to ask questions at this point, but we do have uh quite a few uh speakers as well to this. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, if I'm doing my count correctly, we have uh, one, two, seventeen speakers signed up. Okay, so we're gonna go to the first questions, Counselor Frye, up to five minutes.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, following up on the the T R P P, which is my uh my question to staff from earlier and and I just want to walk through this scenario because I think it's the challenges around income testing aren't just about not wanting to be income tested. People have a variety of different factors, including uh, for instance, if they're in the gig economy, if they're self-employed, if they haven't done their taxes in a while, there's a variety of reasons where people may not be able to be income tested. Now, as I read the T R P P, uh, if a tenant who was, you know, uh given that a lot of these buildings are market rentals, and if a tenant had been in a market rental for, you know, a substantial amount of time, say ten years. Uh, and the building was to be redeveloped, they would get a six-month uh worth of rent compensation package uh in order to move. Um, but if that building that was a market building for their entire ten years of tenancy was to be purchased uh by a nonprofit housing provider. That T R P P six-month qualification immediately drops down to one month. Which I think is is potentially going to be a significant issue for a lot of folks who are paying low market in older market buildings that are presumably going to be bought up by not-for-profit housing providers because we've provided this incentive, which will mean like about a year faster on a development. Um, and obviously with with money in the pipeline um from senior governments to do this kind of housing. So my question is um, how many, do we have a sense of how many potential renters could be impacted by this? Um, have we, have we talked to folks about the income testing kind of factor and and why people don't or may not want to qualify for income-tested housing? And uh, is there a possibility to modify the T R P P to reflect this in nonprofit-owned housing?
Hi, Counselor Frye. Uh, this is Sarah Ellis, um, Housing Planner. Um, so to your first question, um, whether we have a sense of the number of tenants in this specific situation. Um, as mentioned in the presentation, we don't expect there to be a very widespread incidence, um, especially under current uh funding circumstances of existing market rental to be purchased by nonprofit housing providers and redeveloped. Um, so it's not a situation that we expect to arise a lot. However, um, it was something that um was contemplated and did come up in consultation with the sector for the twenty nineteen non-market tenant relocation and protection policy. Um, I'll clarify that the intent of the non-market policy is to be flexible to the um needs of non, non-market housing tenants and providers. With the emphasis being placed on the permanent affordable unit at thirty percent of income. Um, as opposed to the scaled compensation requirements, since we did hear from providers that that could have a significant pro forma impact on the development. Um, however, as mentioned in the Q and A, there may be individual situations where a tenant, for whatever reason, may not be open to be income-tested or may not want to live in the new social housing development. That's a situation that wasn't explicitly contemplated in the new policy. But the policy is sufficiently flexible to be able to come up with solutions on a case-to-case basis. And if it, if it is found that this is a broader situation that needs to be explicitly called out and addressed in the policy, that is definitely something we could do in consultation with the sector.
So now this isn't something we can do on a, on a, on a building-by-building process, though, if if this amendment passes, because we would not have the opportunity to review this as a council, correct?
Um, that is correct in the sense that council wouldn't be um approving the individual T R P. However, the tenant relocation process is the same regardless of whether it's a rezoning or a development permit on the sta, on the staff side.
Right, so for instance, I've spoken to tenants of a building in Marple that is falls exactly under this, this kind of framework where it's a market building, they've been there for a long time. It's recently been purchased by a nonprofit housing provider who is likely planning to redevelopment as part of this. Uh, this amendment we're about to consider. And and there's, there's eight folks there who are, are are concerned about their future. What, what, what do we, what can they expect? If, if they, if the T R P P can't find them housing in that area. And if they, for whatever reason, can't be income-tested to meet the social housing criteria of the future build. Uh, wha, what can these, these tenants expect? One, one month is my understanding?
Thanks, Counselor Frye. Uh, this is Sarah again. Um, I'm not in a position to speak to individual applications beyond the one that we're speaking to today. Um, I will clarify that the, it's not an or, the thirty percent of income or one-month free rent, that there would be a conversation about compensation beyond the one-month free rent requirement um in this, in, in that sort of hypothetical situation.
Uh, can you just flesh that out? So there would be, you're saying that our staff would be engaging with those residents and the developer to ensure that there's some kind of continuity housing plan for the folks, not just as articulated in the
That's right, yeah. Staff would work with the applicant on a case-by-case basis to address the needs of the individual tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frye. Uh, we're, uh, Counselor Dominado next.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. And um, yeah, I'll just rattle through a few questions. Um, first question's around the current zoning um districts and allowance of three to four stories. Could you just expand with that typically, will we typically see strata developments in that case or rental or both?
That's correct. We typically do see strata under existing zoning um regulations. Um, we have very infrequently seen um seen market rental delivered at that density, but it is almost entirely strata in the past ten years.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question's around um timelines and and if council were to implement uh the proposed change. Um, how much time does that shave off uh delivery of non-market or social housing in this case? Like how many months, how many years roughly ballpark?
We've heard varied estimates. Um, on the short end, it's nine to twelve months, and then on the long end, it could be longer.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then with what's proposed, um, if there's a proposal that had mixed tenure such as uh, combination of social housing and below-market rental, would that be precluded from this?
That wouldn't be allowed under the current amendments. Um, the residential floor area has to be one hundred percent social housing.
Is this something that we've looked at or would consider in future? Is mixed tenure like that?
It isn't something that we looked at for this process, given we were following direction in existing community plans. Um, but it's something that could be considered um in the future.
Okay, great. Um, and then um, given that the, you know, the intent here would be to um, you know, move away from the necessity of rezoning um and having to come to public hearing. Uh, would there still be some sort of notification process to neighbors and the neighborhood in general where to indicate that there would be a development coming in place?
Yes, there is still um notification and opportunities for consultation involved in the development permit process.
Okay, great. Um, that's my questions for now. I may have some after I hear from speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Blye, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just have a little follow-up questions um to those that have been asked, actually, is um and and maybe just drilling a little deeper to Counselor Dominado's question around um um, the, the reduction in, in wait times around um um, these applications going to D P and being able to start work. I'm, I'm curious if staff have a sense of what impact that will have on affordability um for a completed project.
Um, it does vary project by project. Um, like I mentioned in response to Counselor Dominado's question, um, the time savings can also vary um depending on the individual site. Um, we've heard estimates for something uh around the ballpark of five percent of savings on construction costs. Um, so that's roughly what we could expect.
How can we be certain that that would um impact um sort of the end user, if you will? So in terms of tenantine and affordability in terms of rent in these units, how can we be certain that that would um um, sort of land uh in terms of increasing affordability in these areas?
Um, the important thing that um, that the pre-zoning, the pre-approved zoning does is it actually improves the opportunity of the social housing provider to access senior government funding. Um, we've heard that especially federal funding programs, but also some other funding programs do require um pre-approved zoning in order to apply. Um, and so having that approved zoning right off the bat um can accelerate the process of accessing senior government funding, which has a direct impact on the level of affordability that's delivered at opening.
Do we have any sense of those numbers when it comes to senior government funding requiring that kind of pre-approval?
Um, can you clarify the question?
Um, so what I mean is I appreciate in principle how enticing that is to um um, motivate council to um, you know, um, move towards a direction of pre-approval. But I wonder um how that shows up in real dollars essentially in terms of how that could support us in Vancouver specifically with the affordability crisis that we're facing when it comes to housing. How can we be certain that um, that, or how can we have a sense of what those numbers would look like if they materialized in terms of senior levels of um senior government funding?
Um, so the affordability that can be delivered through senior government funding obviously varies depending on the program. Um, but I'll give the example of the B C Housing Community Housing Fund, which provides capital grants that intend to deliver a mix of affordability, including units at shelter rates um, rent geared to income and uh, uh, low end of market, and that's a mix of affordability that couldn't be achieved without um senior government funding.
Okay. Um, I, I, I raise concerns around this particular policy, um, I think a while back related to the risk to exist, uh, existing rental stock. And I'm wondering if you can share staff's perspective on um what are those risks and and what council ought to be considering um when considering this proposal today. As we've heard from a number of folks, uh, a number of people from the public who are concerned with existing rental stock. And I just want to note in the context of a not-for-profit being the only um quote-unquote developer applicant that can apply under this new policy. Um, that would certainly mitigate some of the risk of redevelopment, but I wonder if staff can comment on uh what are the risks that we should be considering?
Definitely. Um, so like I mentioned in the presentation, um, uh, first and foremost, the development allowances are only available to nonprofits delivering a hundred percent social housing. Um, we've seen that even in a situation involving existing land or, you know, quote-unquote free land um owned by a nonprofit. Funding is required in most cases to deliver new housing. So add in the requirement of having to purchase a new site, like a market rental site, and already that's, you know, quite challenging from a financial standpoint. Um, so that's what I mean when I say that it's not expected to be widespread, um, certainly with existing funding levels and the cost of land. That said, we have heard from the community housing sector a lot of interest in principle in advancing nonprofit acquisition of existing private market rental housing. And it's actually with the intent of preserving the affordability and protecting existing tenants. Um, and it is something that staff have been in dialogue with the sector about. Um, so that's, that's the, the situation there, kind of the, the, the state.
Okay, I have one question, Mayor. Can I move for a second, Matt? Oh, actually, we're gonna have questions after speakers, so I'll
After quite, you have a, another round after, after speakers.
Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I do have a question I want to be explicitly clear on because I think it will be helpful in advance of speakers. And recognizing and reflecting back, you said this is only available to nonprofits, co-op, or government um owners and partners developing these projects that are delivering a hundred percent social housing. Can you be explicit? Again, uh, on the record of what the definition of social housing is, because I know we have the charter statutory definition. It means something different in people's minds in terms of what those projects are. So can, can you, can you sketch that out explicitly, please? Staff?
Hi, Counselor. Sorry about the delay. It's Dan Garrison, Assistant Director um for Housing Policy. Yeah, that, just can, just to put it clearly on the record, the definition of uh social housing in the zoning and development by law and the development cost levy by law is uh nonprofit rental housing or cooperative housing where uh a, a minimum of thirty percent of the uh units' rent uh below to households with incomes below rent, uh, below, to households with incomes below the BC housing, housing income limits. There is a deeper component of that definition for, uh, housing projects specifically located in the downtown east side, um, but on the citywide basis, that is, that is the definition. Um, I can say that, uh, we've, we've understood over, um, over time, obviously from council and heard the interest in deeper levels of affordability in the, in the non-market housing stock, in the social housing that we're securing. And I can point to the guidelines that staff are recommending that council adopt tonight, uh, which would, uh, ask the Director of Planning to work with applicants to secure deeper levels of affordability, in fact maximize the level of affordability that's possible. So that is something we will be, uh, following up on should council approve this, uh, this evening.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. So following up on that, and if it's a minimum of 30% of the units, put another way, does that mean that within these buildings, while they may be developed by nonprofits, co-op or government partners, that 70% could conceivably be at market rental rates?
That, that's conceivably possible if it's not, if the, um, projects are not financially viable at, uh, deeper levels of affordability. It, it is possible that they would be, um, that up to 70% of the units could be at, at market. We typically see what we call low end of market, which is at a, a 10 or 20% discount to what the market would be, but yes.
Okay. I think it's really important to be clear on that because I know a lot of those parties would be striving for deeper affordability, like you say, but sometimes with the cost of the land and the construction, depending on the site, it's not always possible. So we're not talking about, just I want to be clear on misperception, we're not talking about bringing in a bunch of, um, six-story buildings where four-story was possible before for 100% social housing units. It could be 30% of the total number of units that's delivered possibly are at a...
It could be 30, 30% of the number of units that are delivered that are, uh, at rents that are secured to households with incomes below the housing income limits. That's, that's correct. Uh, although I think that, that's where it gets into the point that Sarah Ellis was raising around, really the goal here is to set the nonprofit sector up on these, uh, projects to be able to have a better chance of accessing the senior government housing programs that would help them to achieve those deeper levels of affordability.
Okay. And then put it this other way, that without this initiative or approval, conceivably those nonprofits are competing for sites, they have to go through a rezoning, it's currently only allowed for four stories, and other people acquiring the sites can continue to build four-story strata. That would be sort of a status quo scenario without this...
That's, that's correct. That's, that's the status quo. Um, there is a possibility in, in some of the planned areas, particularly Grandview, Woodland and Marpole, to go through a rezoning process to, to achieve a heightened density that's comparable to what's being proposed here. Um, but certainly that does add the complexity to it. So we have seen over the last decade, as, as Sarah said, um, primarily four-story strata developments in zoning districts.
Okay. And then, so the last question, in the sessions, has there been any sort of positive indicators directly from funding partners, um, that changes like this will incent more investment? Because that's been one of the biggest challenges, is the decreased lack of investment over the past several decades in social housing.
Just 15 seconds.
Hi, Councilor Kirby Young, Sarah Ellis, Housing Planner. Um, yes, we have, in consultation with BC Housing and CMHC, both parties did say that pre-approved zoning would, um, improve access to, um, their funding programs for, um, nonprofit housing providers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Hardwick, up to five.
Thanks. So, um, just to be clear, we say that 100% of the residential floor areas developed as social housing, except that 70% of the area can be market rental. So only 30% is really social housing. Why are we saying that 100% of the residential floor area is developed as social housing if it's really only 30%?
Hi, Councilor, Dan Garrison again. Um, yeah, that, that is, uh, the definition in the bylaw of social housing is, uh, is a building in which a minimum of 30% of the, of the units are at, uh, uh, rents affordable to households with incomes under the housing income limits. So in the city's definition, uh, and I fully understand that there are, is a range of opinions about that definition, but in terms of the city's definition, um, that does meet the definition of social housing.
Well, okay. So it's 100%, but it's not really 100%. It's 30%. So, um...
It is 100% social housing, but 30% secured at deeper affordable rents within that housing. And it is not uncommon. Uh, in fact, it's completely common in the majority of government housing programs that are available right now for them to be mixed income affordable housing. So even in DC Housing's, um, model, for example, of the Community Housing Fund model, which is one of the more deeply affordable, um, programs available these days, uh, 30% of the units, uh, in those projects are, are possible to be up to market rents. So, um, mixed income and the inclusion of some higher rent units in, uh, projects that are determined or defined as social housing, um, is, is fairly standard in, in housing programs, uh, across, uh, across Canada.
Okay. Let me try this again. So it says 100% are, uh, residential floors developed as social housing, except that 70% of this can be available as market rental. Is that, did you not say 70% of the area can be market rent? At the same time, you're saying 100% has to be social housing?
It doesn't really help to ask the same question over and over again if you've got...
Well, it, but, okay, it's the definition of insanity, but these are, these are absolutely contradictory statements, which is what I'm getting at here.
Okay.
If we're just gonna say we have, uh, confused definitions, then it's not going to solve the problem. But what the truth is, we're out there pitching it as 100%, which is not really accurate.
Yep. Debate later. This is questions to staff.
Okay. Well, I, again, I was trying to get, um, you know, some clarity other than, you know, this is the way it is, you know, it's broken, but we're just gonna continue down this path is, is what I got, because it is contradictory. So we did verify that, just one more time, Mr. Garrison, 100% has to be developed as social housing, except for that 70% of the area can be market rental.
You're asking the same question again?
I'm asking for a yes, no. I'm asking for a yes, no.
I am asking you to move on to the next question. Thank you.
And I'm asking for a yes, no answer. There's nothing wrong with asking for a yes, no answer.
Same question three times. We're gonna...
But I didn't get a yes, no answer. You know what? I'll, I'll cede my time, Mr. Mayor, or sorry, Mayor.
Okay, great. Council...
This is, I would like to have clear answers when questions are.
Dating your time? Okay. Councilors Swanson up to five.
Yeah, I, I wanna put forward a hypothetical example here, and my question is to tell me why I shouldn't be worried about this. Okay, so say a nonprofit, uh, buys either a market building or maybe even has its own building, and it has relatively low rents, say maybe around 1,200 a month for a one-bedroom, and say maybe 50 tenants. And so that building gets demolished, the tenants get evicted, and a new building happens with, say, 100 units, and 70% of them are paying, say, low end of market around 1,800, and 30% would be paying, say, 1,200, more like Hills, but we'd lose 20 units of affordability. So tell me why I shouldn't worry about this.
Uh, hi, Councilor, uh, Dan Garrison. Thanks for the question. Um, so I, I think that what I would point you to in terms of that, uh, is, uh, the guidelines that staff are proposing. And on, in Appendix B on page three of eight, um, there are guidelines written in that the Director of Planning and/or the Development Permit Board, as the case may be, must consider, uh, with relation to affordability. Um, and, uh, it, so, uh, number, uh, like, and there are, um, considerations that they must, uh, must consider in relation to the application. One of them, there B is, is they must consider replacement of existing affordability levels of the rental units currently on-site wherever possible. And so I, I can tell you, this is something that even today through, uh, rezonings, uh, that we are, are looking at and considering, um, in terms of redevelopment of nonprofit stock, one of the, one of the items that staff essentially always negotiate consistently with the nonprofit is to ensure that regardless of the funding program that they're coming in under, that their baseline is that we wanna see a comparable level of affordability, at least in the replacement units. We understand that there may need for financing purposes to be additional, um, uh, closer to market rate rental units added to the project, but in terms of the renewal, uh, renewed units, we already, uh, seek to ensure that those are, are replaced at, uh, at comparable rents and levels of affordability to what was there before.
So how enforceable is the guideline?
Well, it's, it's clear that this would be council's directions in terms of the expectation, um, of nonprofits. It also generally, in my experience, is in the nonprofit's interest. They also are looking to, um, achieve as deep affordable, uh, deeper level of affordability as possible in most cases. And I, I think that you can also think about the interplay between, um, the, uh, planning approvals and our tenant relocation and protection policies, um, that require them to be offered, uh, affordable, uh, units at rents they can afford. Um, and so when you factor all of those things together, typically we do see nonprofits trying very hard and committing to replace at least the level of affordability that was there on the site previously.
And are we thinking that this is mostly targeted at properties that are already owned by nonprofits? Because I know it's said basically that the financing only works if you don't have to buy land.
Yeah, I think that, uh, as, as Sarah indicated, that's where we think the first, um, opportunities are related to this, is it would largely be related to nonprofits that do have their own properties where the buildings are aging, where they are looking at redevelopment opportunities already. And there are a number of nonprofits, I'm thinking of, uh, Brightside or Vancouver Native Housing Society, Lumer Native Housing Society, that have significant portfolios already that they're looking at.
And they would be...
So that would be where...
And they would be required to at least maintain their current level of affordability in a new building?
Yeah, that is, that is typical, uh, of what we've done. And, and you've, you may have seen that on the projects that have come through recently, um, in these areas that have come through the rezoning process where the base definition of social housing is, is 30%. And you, you may have seen us securing, you know, 40 or 42% or whatever the percentage is that requires, um...
Summit shelter.
Yeah, to, to ensure that the level of affordability that was there before is replaced. That's generally our, our, our baseline goal.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilors Swanson, uh, Councilor Kerr. Am I on mute, Councilor Kerr? Councilor Kerr, still can't hear you. Maybe I can go to Councilor Boyle and then come back to you, Councilor Kerr. Just give a yell when you're on. Uh, Councilor Boyle, up to five.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. I was gonna wait until after, but, um, I'll happily ask a couple of questions now, um, to give Councilor Kerr a little time on the audio. Um, so my first question, uh, is just to, um, hope that staff can, uh, reiterate from the presentation and from the report that, uh, the idea of this, uh, action would be to speed up the time in which we can build or the community housing sector can build more non-market housing, which would result in, uh, an overall increase in non-market, um, housing protected with, uh, with non-market, you know, mixed in some non-market rates, uh, over the length of the building, uh, in all of these neighborhoods across the city? Like, just to clarify that the overall result of this, as we expect, is, um, more non-market, uh, housing units?
Hi, Councilor Boyle. Uh, Sarah Ellis, Housing Planner. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And that in the, um, surveys that we have done, uh, that is a clear and stated need that we need more non-market housing units, uh, to meet the needs of current and future residents in the city.
Yes, that's correct. I didn't include the statistic on the slide, but we had 90% of our 2,200 survey respondents agreed that there is a need for new social housing in the city of Vancouver.
And in the engagement that was done with the community housing sector in the development of this policy, uh, there was support that they saw this as a, um, important and strong move to make in terms of them being able to create more non-market housing to meet that need?
As I mentioned in the PowerPoint, um, the sector and our funding partners, um, are excited about this as a first step, but they have been pushing us to go further, both in terms of the scope of the work, um, from a geographical standpoint, and also in terms of the density allowed.
Okay. Great. Um, and that, that is exactly my final question. I'd submitted it, and I appreciate, uh, that you addressed it in the presentation about expanding, um, this work to other neighborhoods of the city. So can you just again remind us that, um, council can expect some, uh, more recommendations along these lines to come back in some of the area plans that are coming to us and that further consideration of expanding beyond that could, uh, happen at the direction of council through those plans or outside of their plan, those plans?
That's correct. Um, I mentioned the Broadway Plan and the Vancouver Plan, and, um, expanding delivery of social housing is, uh, an important consideration in both of those planning programs.
Okay. And then, um, as a final question, can I ask, uh, the, you said the community housing sector, uh, expressed support for additional density? Um, the, the density that is, was landed on in this report, um, can you speak to why that and what it would look like to add more density, uh, in these areas or other areas?
Um, in terms of, uh, why we landed on the 2.5 FSR in the zoning amendments, um, it was following direction that's in existing community plans for rezonings for six-story, uh, rental buildings in the Grandview Woodland Plan specifically and also in the Marpole Plan, both aim in and around that 2.5 FSR area. Um, in terms of what extra density would look like in these sites, um, I might defer to my colleague, Paul Chang.
Oh, good evening. Uh, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Yep. Yes.
Hi, uh, this is Paul Chang, Senior Development Planner. Um, definitely, uh, extra density can be done, uh, it's possible. Uh, however, I do want to point out that, uh, oftentimes, um, this six-story, uh, kind of typology is what we consider, uh, a, a kind of sweet spot in terms of urban density. It's not too tall to the point where we need to start thinking about, uh, ensuring really large setbacks to make up for, uh, the extra height of a building. Six stories, uh, can create a pretty comfortable street wall and not the kind of valley effect that we would get if we started looking at eight stories or 10 stories or something like that as a street wall. Once we get past the six-story height, oftentimes, uh, we would look to a, a more special kind of, uh, sculpting of the building in order to make sure that it wouldn't be too bulky on the public realm and on the, uh, neighboring sites. So that would still be possible through a rezoning, but, uh, for this particular item that you're looking at right now, um, it's kind of a, a new baseline for social housing in this particular area.
Great. I see I'm out of time. I really appreciate those answers. Thank you, Steph.
Thanks. Councilor Kerr, can we, you on?
I, I hope so.
There you go. You're there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for our wonderful IT staff. Um, uh, I'm, I'm really trying to probe out the, uh, the questions that Council Hardwick raised, just explaining, um, and so I want to get an explanation of why we use the term "social housing" the way we do. My first question is, um, do nonprofit operators, uh, get government support from, let's say, federal government, CMHC, um, in terms of financing or BC Housing, only for social housing? I mean, for that definite, for the way we've defined it, for like their housing has to be social housing?
Hi, Councilor, Dan Garrison. Um, there are a range of programs that federal and provincial, um, how, uh, provincial agencies have. Um, you know, there, if, most of the programs that are available to the private sector who are not nonprofits or, and is not social housing would just be financing programs. The programs that, uh, provide capital or operating grants that get you to deep levels of affordability are generally reserved for nonprofits and for social housing. The programs that uh provide capital or operating grants that get you to deep levels of affordability are generally reserved for nonprofits and for social housing.
For social housing, okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, um so uh what is a typical financial model uh that a nonprofit society um engages in or or establishes for especially for the maintenance of ongoing um operating costs? In in terms of the mix of units within or the kinds of units that um that they uh provide?
Yeah, typically, and if.
Actually, just Mr. Garrison, uh sorry, um Dan, um specifically, how many nonprofit providers can afford to build and operate if a hundred percent of the units were at hills uh levels or lower, even deeper affordability?
Right, well, that that's where the, I mean, there probably are very few nonprofits that could do it on their own. That's where you really are dependent at that point on government uh funding programs. And so it is one of the things that we have here heard regularly as we're working with our community housing sector is um that that there is a a movement to sort of build the capacity in that sector. So that a- as you know, we've gone through periods of time, and we're in one right now where there's significant government programs, but we also go through dry spells, and the last dry spell we went through was a long dry spell. And so the ability of nonprofits to have the flexibility to still be able to deliver uh housing when it's only with low-cost financing or when the government programs aren't available is one that's something is something that the community housing sector is very committed to and very interested in.
Okay, um and in the um uh so they they um they seek that funding, and in the absence of sort of deep ongoing funding that say might be supplied by BC Housing, um it isn't that nonprofit providers then have to turn, if they don't have that funding ongoing, they have to turn to some other source of ongoing funding, and that um typically is rents from units that aren't at hills but could be market rent?
That's right, and that's one of the key reasons why we see mixed income projects and mixed rent projects uh is because rent is usually the primary source of income or revenue to cover operating costs. And so you do have to set rents at a rate, and you have to have a a certain number of uh units in any of these projects where um the rents can increase uh at a steady rate, because operating costs, of course, rise too.
Right, so the reticence to change our definition of social housing, which as you know I've tried to do, to to be one where it's all at thirty percent of income, is because it would be a lot of operators of nonprofit housing, in the absence of some significant financial support from governments on operating, wouldn't be able to make it, they wouldn't be able to operate their housing.
Yes, that is correct, and we have consulted specifically with the community housing sector on this issue, and we did hear back from them fairly clearly that while they are extremely interested in delivering as deep affordability as possible, they do appreciate the flexibility and the definition that we that we currently have, even though, of course, we all appreciate that it's, you know, if you're just achieving that base definition, it's not as affordable as we all would like it to be.
Got it, okay, thank you, that's that's.
Thank you councillor Carr, uh councillor Dejanova up to five minutes.
Thanks very much, I did have a follow-up question just uh further to uh councillor Carr's question, so um I leave it up to you, um mayor, who who this question should be directed to, but possibly uh follow-up to Dan Garrison would just be, how much do these organizations, these nonprofit organizations, um count on philanthropy? And also, uh is there a possibility uh to comment on sort of the new model that's come forward? And I think it's been since uh twenty twelve or twenty thirteen about, uh you know, instead of having nonprofits sort of owning some of these units and seeing that as a benefit, that the city of Vancouver or through Vaha, we see that owners, we see the turnkey units turned over to the city, and the city then uh moved forward with an RFP process to choose an operator. So does that in any way uh put put a nonprofit in a position where they may not have the equity that they would need to be to be able to uh be considered for some of these programs uh offered by BC Housing or CMHC specifically, or I suppose other funding programs?
Thank you for the question councillor, but to the to the first question, there are a number of nonprofits that are increasingly seeking to related sources of funding which are slightly different, and I would say one of them is is certainly philanthropy, and you get some organizations, and think about perhaps the YWCA, that are exceptionally good at attracting philanthropic um contributions to their project. And then you have some organizations that are looking um at wh- what you might call sort of patient equity contributions or uh social equity contributions to their projects. There's some nonprofits like I maybe a catalyst community development society in that category that are that are uh seeking those kinds of funding opportunities. So that certainly is a growing area. In the in terms of our uh of the turnkey assets and the ownership of units, um it is a it it it's an open question, it's one we've been working with for uh quite a while with the sector around whether it's better for the city to own and lease on a long-term basis into the sector or whether the sector should um should take ownership. I would just note that it in the context of the public hearing tonight, we we aren't re- that the this isn't really one where uh a an issue where inclusionary zoning is is kind of a question. This is more about supporting nonprofits to do projects primarily on their own land, although this would would apply to city-owned land as well. But it's not really an issue of uh of inclusionary or or turnkey assets um that would be created through these policies.
I was just looking at the nonprofits that we were including, and then also just wondering if you might be able to comment just to follow up to that on how nonprofits may be in offering a mix of different housing, uh you know, in in their housing models, if they were to offer some subsidized housing, but also have some housing at market, which I I understand fits within some of the definitions for CMHC and BC Housing as to how they can fund themselves, that then you would be creating a complete community in a sense that every door is the same, and that we wouldn't have these buildings that, you know, perhaps everyone's like, that's the social housing building, and that's the market, you know, rental building over there. So I mean, is that something that you could comment on in the Housing Vancouver Strategy and how it fits into what we're considering tonight?
Well, certainly, and I mean, I do think when we talk to our community housing partners, there are two reasons why mixed income models are are sometimes um are sometimes preferred, and and one of them is is, of course, just financially making the projects work for viability reasons. But the other, the, you know, there are times where um they want to see a a strong social mix in the buildings as well. And and certainly through this process and through all of our processes around non-market housing, we do try to uh achieve a a a high level of design quality um so that the buildings do fit in. And so we don't we don't see some of the stigma that you saw uh related to sort of social housing in the in the sort of old days of the programs in the in the sort of sixties and seventies, more in American cities than Canadian, but but still, yeah.
And one very quick last question, just with the last few seconds of my time, do you do you happen to think that sort of approving this tonight, moving forward with staff recommendations would help to foster those mixed income models of housing, where perhaps we wouldn't see it sort of uh looked at as this is the hu- social housing building and this over here is the market building?
I I think I think we would see more uh mixed income nonprofit-led housing projects and more more co-ops as well uh coming through under this, both of which are mixed income uh models, and so uh I think that that would be the case. And I think that we would be seeing a sort of leveling of the playing field in these zoning districts that would enable those nonprofit projects to move forward in in zones that are have otherwise seen strata primarily.
Thanks.
Thanks, that's my time, thank you very much.
Thanks, okay, I don't see anybody else on the list, uh at least in this round of questions, so we're gonna move on to speakers. The first speaker I have on the list is Mark White from the seniors advisory committee.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Sure can, please go ahead.
Well, I'm sorry, have you got my slides up?
I'll stop your timer, I'll just check.
Are they were distributed?
Just one second, please, I'm gonna check for the clerks.
Mayor Stewart, we are just getting them ready.
Great.
You give us a few moments.
Okay. There we go, they're up.
Okay.
Go ahead whenever you're ready. Speaker? You're on mute perhaps? Uh Mark White, are you still there?
Mayor Stewart, we're just checking on our end.
Okay.
Point of privilege?
Councillor Dejanova?
Thanks so much, um Mayor Stewart, I I'm just wonder- and perhaps it's a point of procedure, actually, my apologies. I I is that appropriate now, a point of procedure?
I'm not sure what it is.
Oh, okay, so sorry, um we have all is as uh council received emails before from speakers who uh just due to technical difficulties have been on the line but not able to uh be answered. I'm just wondering when they do come on, if they were on the line and they couldn't hear us or we couldn't hear them or there was an issue with moderator or the system, do they get to uh go in line next? Or did they go to the very bottom of the list, I was hoping to ask?
Yeah, uh so the clerks and I constantly monitor that, um and so if somebody is like thirty positions out, then uh that's too far. But if they just missed by a couple, then we usually allow them back in, and we we're just constantly uh trying to make sure that we're accommodating people as much as possible, so I I on jabber, the clerks are constantly updating me on who's on and who isn't. So I hope that answers your question, yeah.
Yes, I'm gone.
Okay. Say thank you.
Okay, there you go, Mark White, uh please go ahead, we have your slides up, whenever you're ready.
Okay, that's wonderful, uh thank you very much, uh uh thank you, Mayor and councillor, and also uh city staff. On behalf of the seniors advisory committee, the housing committee subcommittee, uh we're supporting this, but we believe that it's really should be uh phase one, uh a larger phase. If we go to the next slide, I think that the important thing about this is that we're laying the foundation to support more mixed income uh housing, uh but I think that we're a little bit concerned, uh given the uh increase of material costs on the potential impact uh that's going to have on affordability and the possible need uh to increase the number of stories. Slide, alright, um uh we think that part two should consider affordability and accessibility mix and as well as community acceptability uh for eight to ten stories, especially for housing specifically targeting seniors and people with disabilities, given that higher capital cost, the loss of revenue due to fewer review units. As part of this, we recommend the establishment of a committee of nonprofit housing providers and funders to better consider the affordability mix and ex- uh accessibility requirements for different target groups, depending on the the funding envelopes that are available. So we do think that there needs to be some further discussion firsted in in the in any of the councillors uh found uh the issue of affordability. If we put it.
Uh sorry, um you you know, you're cutting in and out a bit, it sounds like your reception is uh perhaps you're on a cellphone?
Yes, unfortunately, uh I only have a cellphone.
Okay, um just you are cutting out a little bit, we can hear you eighty percent of the time, just a few times you drop out. So when you do, I'll just uh I'll just let you know.
Okay, sorry about that. To go to the slide, uh that's immediately uh be the slide five, I just want to.
Yeah, you you cut out again, you you cut out again on your cellphone?
Uh is uh is this any better?
So you you have, you are cutting out again on your cellphone?
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just uh coming outside, is this any better?
Uh uh well, we can keep trying, so just keep going.
Okay, anyways, I'll keep going, I'm just saying that uh we know that uh the highest that seniors are at the highest risk for homelessness, and we desperately need uh more housing for seniors. If we go to the next slide, I, there's two slides uh that talk about activity limitations of seniors. And we can see that seniors do have um a fair amount of activity limitations that do require larger suites. If we go to slide seven, uh for instance, uh for seniors um uh that have difficulty walking, using stairs, using hands, fingers, or doing other physical activities, it's up to around um fifty-eight percent of all those in the city of Vancouver with limitations uh that have noted that they, yes, always have activity limitations. So uh just going back, I think that the way to solve some of the issues around affordability is really a meeting with the uh providers, the nonprofit providers, BC Housing, CMHC, Van City, as well as to explore what the city can do in terms of their community housing uh incentive programs such as CHIP. And so finally, on the last slide, number nine, uh we support phase one for six stories, although concerned about the impact of increased building costs. We can, we are suggesting to consider phase two, an expansion of eight to ten stories to better address level of affordability and accessibility needed for seniors and people with disabilities, uh and then uh meet with nonprofit housing providers and funders to create guidelines congruent with available funding envelopes, including self-subsidy models. And uh also to broaden discussions with nonprofit organizations, community organizations with strong interest in investing in housing, ethno-cultural, religious, and labor organizations. Thank you very much, um uh but uh in to in closing, we are supporting this as an initial phase.
Thank you so much, uh there are questions, councillor Dejanova and then councillor Bly, councillor Dejanova, please go ahead.
Thanks very much for making the time to be here on behalf of the seniors advisory committee tonight, and really appreciate your comments. Uh some of the the uh comments you made touched on some of the questions that I just asked, just asked, and I wonder if um in looking at sort of the mixed income as a way to fund more housing units for the nonprofit sector at lower rates, if the if the seniors advisory committee has sort of taken any specific position on that, at looking at sort of these cross-subsidy models as a way of providing more affordable housing throughout our city?
Well, I I know that um uh that we know uh there's been much discussion uh from the seniors advisory committee concerning co-op housing. And co-op housing provides uh um healthy uh communities, intergenerational communities. Uh and we know that in the city, there's probably close uh close to thirty to forty percent, uh Tom may have, uh Tom Armstrong may have better figures of seniors living in co-ops, and they're healthier communities, so mixed income communities also really share out the social equity question and uh and address the concerns that we have of um putting of ghettoizing um housing based on income. So we think that it's a healthier uh healthier, we build health healthier communities with mixed incomes.
Where every door is the same, I assume, so that no one knows sort of, so yeah, I mean, it's it's between the person and the nonprofit what they're paying. And the nonprofit.
Exactly.
Answers to BC Housing and CMHC, their funders or whoever is supporting them, correct?
That's correct, and in and in some cases, a couple of cases in the city, uh they're self-subsidy models, so higher-income members pay into a subsidy pool that then support lower-income members.
Okay, exactly, thank you, that's what I meant by that model. Uh another question that I had for you and something that I may I may ask sort of um if there's an opportunity later on to staff is. um, if there's an opportunity later on to staff, is, uh, looking at seniors and being a former representative, uh, liaison to the seniors advisory committee during my time on park board, uh, although I was there for park-related issues, I heard, I heard a number of issues, and one of them that, that came forward was the idea of, of going beyond a co-op and looking at co-housing, and shared common space, like shared kitchens, shared laundry, and having that issue, that people with disabilities and seniors face of loneliness, kind of, um, offering those options for seniors, do you think that is, that's of importance at all to your committee? And sorry to put you on the spot, because I know that the committee...
No, no, uh, it, it's been discussed, and we think that there are a lot of opportunities, uh, equity, um, we're looking at opportunities for, uh, also for, um, uh, as you say, equity co-ops for independent living for seniors. Uh, I think that there's a strong interest, and there are, uh, both international and in other municipalities, uh, particularly in the States, uh, that have been, um, exploring, um, more on the, sort of the, uh, the co-sharing models, um, as well as building them into co-ops as well.
Okay, well, I'll ask staff about that later, thank you for answering my questions, and I've toured some of those models myself in the States, also in Europe, so thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, uh, Counselor Bly, up to five.
Uh, thanks very much, Mayor, and thanks, Mark, for being here, I just have a couple of questions. Going back to the rising, um, housing material costs, the, the concern that you've raised related to what you call a phase one, which would be in this report, I'm just wondering if you can expand upon your thought there, and, um, give a little bit more context to your concerns and what this council could consider in addressing those at this time?
Right, uh, well, I think it's probably would be good, um, when, I, I understand that, um, uh, Brightside is going to be, uh, one of the speakers, uh, that maybe, uh, it's probably more, uh, there'd be more informative, uh, data that would be able to be presented around that, um, uh, coming from one of the nonprofit, um, housing providers.
Okay, so I, I can certainly ask that question when we hear from those speakers, um, that what I'm...
Uh, but, uh, oh, yeah, uh, all that I was really referring to is, is that we've been hearing in the news the rising costs of materials, and in fact, um, the suggestion that, uh, at least on the lumber side, uh, building materials have doubled, and so, uh, it's just, that's the, that's the concern that we have, but I don't have any data, uh, uh, to know what the potential impact is, other than that we have some concerns about it.
Right, so when raising those concerns, um, you know, there's one, um, one sort of, um, lens to this, to council in terms of contemplating this policy change would be that we could potentially reduce the wait time, um, in a rezoning application by about two years, and although we don't have a ton of influence in terms of material costs, we could reduce the cost in, in sort of sitting on land and waiting for a rezoning. Um, I'm just trying to sort of identify what, um, council could do to, to sort of offset some of those costs in terms of materials that we don't really have a ton of control over.
Yes, uh, well, like, you know, I, uh, from what I've heard from nonprofit, uh, housing providers, this is a significant savings of, uh, of, um, um, not having to have a one, two, two-year delay in, uh, in actually building, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm just curious, you are very well, um, versed and have spent a lot of time, um, understanding, um, our existing housing supply, specifically rental, and specifically as it relates to seniors. So, one of the concerns that's been raised by others is that this policy change risks existing supply and subsequent affordability, and I'm wondering if you share those concerns?
Uh, we do, but we do think that the, um, uh, the city staff's appendix B, I believe, um, uh, and the guidelines, I, I, I also have a lot of faith in our current nonprofit, uh, housing providers. So, um, I haven't seen many instances of the nonprofit housing providers, uh, um, um, uh, actually, um, uh, uh, not attempting to address, uh, at least the provision of the same level of affordability to current members, or to, to current household residents, uh, in an, in a, in a redevelopment plan.
Right, so something like our TRP, or, or some mechanism that ensures that people are going to be taken care of and either relocated, compensated, what have you, if they are, um, if, i- if they, their housing is disrupted because of redevelopment, for example?
That's correct, and I think also, it, this, um, passing this would also provide possible opportunities, depending on the land size, uh, uh, we know that both Brightside and also, um, uh, some of the developments, I think the Chinese seniors building in, in Strathcona, where they were able to build side-by-side to reduce displacement, so, um, yeah.
Okay, um, Mark, do you...
But it, it is a concern, of course.
Yes, yes, of course, and we have to keep that in mind, thank you so much for answering my question.
Thanks, uh, that's it for questions, really appreciate you, uh, coming in, uh, this evening, um, and providing your thoughts on this, I'm gonna move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the next speaker is, uh, Jason Hingley.
Good evening, uh, can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Thank you, yeah, my name's Jason Hingley, I'm the Director of, uh, Planning, Development, and Finance at Metro Vancouver Housing. Uh, I'm calling in support of, uh, of this proposal from, from staff. Uh, Metro Vancouver Housing is one of the largest owners and operators of affordable housing in the Metro Vancouver region, and also B C. Uh, and I think this proposal is, is a great step forward, uh, it could even go further as previous speakers and, uh, counselors have also mentioned, particularly in the fre- uh, frequently used, uh, transit corridors, uh, which a lot of these areas are. I wanted to focus a few of my points, why I'm in support of this, uh, is down to the cost, which, uh, the topic just beforehand was, uh, was targeted at, but the cost of rezoning itself, uh, extra consultants, extra fees, changes in scope potentially through that rezoning, or like cost to the development. The length of the rezoning, where staff mentioned between twelve, uh, nine and twelve months, counselors mentioned up to two years, at significant cost, uh, it's cost through escalation. Uh, the cost today, uh, are lower than the cost of materials and products and contractors and fees of tomorrow, and I did a quick calculation based on a hundred unit building, or a hundred home, uh, building, the escalation per month through that rezoning period could be in the region of a hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per month. Uh, so the longer that takes, the, the more, uh, the project is gonna cost you, and the more you've got to debt service, because as spoken, or questioned about nonprofits purchasing market rentals, uh, in my opinion, that'd be very difficult to do from a pro forma perspective. Even paying for the pure construction of a building and adding affordability is challenging enough, whi- which is why those escalation costs are so important, and reducing them, or minimizing, uh, what needs to be done. On the point of relocation, Metro Vancouver Housing has one of the largest, uh, owners and operators of affordable housing. We, we are one of these operators where, uh, you know, our housing was built, and we've reached a point where we, we, we had a crossroads on what to do, looking at preserving our affordable stock that we have, but also re, uh, developing to add density, and to add new affordable or social housing, uh, to, to, to the market and, uh, to the region, was really important to us. And the, the point of relocation has been very, uh, very important to us and well thought through, and it can be overcome by proper planning, communication between the nonprofit sector, uh, and municipalities, and supporting the tenants through those relocation is, is really important. And it's important to remember that creating new affordable housing creates a ripple effect, that the more affordable housing you develop, the more affordable housing you have to relocate tenants within, the more relocate, uh, redevelopment you can create, the more affordable housing you can therefore develop. And it, it takes time, but it needs that initial tranche of, uh, of developments to move forward. So, in short, I support this for the, the factors that I've mentioned, and happy to take any questions.
Thanks so much, you do have a question, Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thanks very much, Jason, um, I, and I, I certainly understand where Metro sits, being the city of Vancouver rep on the Metro Vancouver Housing Committee. I was hoping that you might be able to elaborate on some of the ways, if I'm not putting you on the spot, that we, we could maybe go further, as you mentioned, in transit corridors.
Yeah, well, as we know, uh, rental, um, uh, owners of rental hu- uh, homes, uh, 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 support transit mo- more than most, and in those corridors, as the previous speaker, uh, mentions, going higher than just the six stories, uh, enables extra density, and enables that mixed model, enables, uh, enables the pro forma to make these projects actually viable in the first place. Uh, this is, again, just pure construction, uh, and therefore, generating the model and going over a certain density enables the, the pro forma to tip in a, in a positive direction to, to make the, uh, the housing affordable.
Thanks so much, and then just, uh, touching on pro forma, as you'd mentioned, and, and the rising costs of a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand was, I think, the figure that you, uh, quoted, I've, I've seen it lower, I've seen it higher, uh, just in my experience, uh, professionally working in non-market housing in the past, but just wondered if, if you felt sort of with, uh, Vancouver's short program, the social housing or rental tenure program, that those timelines have actually, uh, you know, been, been, uh, shorter and more equitable for nonprofits? To try and make housing more affordable and to deliver on that?
Yeah, I mean, every step that's made is a step in the right direction from the nonprofit and, and providing social affordable, uh, housing is, is a step in the right direction. I can't talk from personal experience through that, I'd leave that maybe to, to others that, that have, but anything that is offered is there, but every month that it's taken in a, uh, in, in some sort of process, is, is a month that the, the nonprofit is incurring costs in the construction. And I did my calculation based on, uh, a hundred home, uh, buildings, so yeah, it, it could vary depending on how many buildings, obviously, the, the cost increases the more building, uh, the more homes you, you develop. But from cost consulting, recent cost consulting, we're, we're seeing five to six percent escalation rate, uh, per year, uh, which obviously you can factor forward on the, the, the cost of your projects.
Exactly, and with rent, uh, and the province setting rent increases, I mean, and we're talking in market for two percent, but looking in the non, non-market se- sector, can you share with me how much, uh, Metro Vancouver increases this rent per year, if at all?
Uh, for, for sitting tenants, uh, uh, a low end of market, uh, obviously, a, a lot of our housing is rent geared to income, so thirty percent of the household income, um, but at that, it's, uh, what we would do is, is try and keep up with inflation, uh, and the allowable, uh, rents per the, uh, uh, per, per the province, or not, as, as it is right now. Uh, and so, we, we only do that just purely to cover our cost of operating the projects, uh, just to stay status quo.
Okay, and, but if your, if your costs go up at Metro, and rent geared to income, and incomes don't go up, is it really Metro taking on the responsibility for those costs?
Uh, sorry, could you repeat the question?
If rent geared to income, it's based on your income, but costs are going up, and Metro Vancouver owns the housing, so your costs are going up, but you're renting on an R G I model, rent geared to income, then really the difference of that is made up by Metro Vancouver, is that correct? Or the nonprofit is, uh, you, renting the R G I unit?
Yeah, correct, re- re- rent geared to income isn't, is, is based on the person's income of, uh, below, below the household income limits, as pre- previously referenced, uh, so if the cost of operating a project...
Yeah, but you, but the cost goes up, who picks up the difference?
Uh, well, yeah, the, it, it's, uh, as, uh, from an profit, it, it depends on your funding sources, but if it's, uh, self-funded, self-supported, uh, then it's picked up within the nonprofit, so you, it's either from, uh, low-end-of-market rents, or it's from, uh, you know, cutting expenditures somewhere.
Thanks so much, I hope I didn't put you on the spot too much, really appreciate you making the time to be here.
Thanks so much, that's it for questions, really appreciate you, uh, calling in, and I'm gonna move to the next speaker now. Um, let's see here, counsel, it is... Oh, where did my let's go? Okay, the next speaker is, uh, William Azaroff. Speaker number one.
Good evening. Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council, can you hear me?
Sure can, please go ahead, up to five.
Awesome, awesome, yeah, thanks for, uh, considering this amendment tonight. I'm William Azaroff, I'm the CEO of Brightside Community Homes Foundation, I'm also on the board and secretary of the B C Nonprofit Housing Association, so, uh, speaking obviously in support of this amendment. Wanted to make a few points, and, and I, perhaps having listened in, can answer some of the questions that have come up, but, uh, just to remind you, I think at this point you all know Brightside, but, uh, we're one of the largest not-for-profit housing providers operating in Vancouver. We have, uh, twenty-six buildings in the city and over a thousand residents. And, you know, we've made it our mission the last few years to really rise to address the housing crisis that we all face, and so we've been quite, um, strong in redeveloping some of our aging buildings, uh, in order to provide more modern and just more housing, um, and so we know the rezoning process fairly well at this point, uh, as, as you may recall, we have three prod- uh, um, projects that have passed, uh, public hearing, and one more that you'll see hopefully in June. So we've run some of the numbers, and so we estimate that each rezoning that we could skip would save us about half a million dollars per project. Um, and those are somewhat a conservative estimate, because the reality is, um, the guidelines that would be, uh, part of this amendment, that would allow us to bring the guidelines to an architect and design, uh, to those guidelines, and as long as we meet those guidelines, we can build, uh, that alone would save so much back and forth. So, the short program has been excellent, and to the previous question, it has shaved time off the process, but the reality is, there's a whole, um, pre-application letter of inquiry stage that requires quite a bit of back and forth, you design something, there's step backs and setbacks, and different form factors that need to be adjusted, and all that back and forth, that's not included in the half a million, because it's hard to extricate from the basic architectural costs, but certainly the architectural costs would come down if we could just show architects the guidelines we built, or designed to those guidelines, we built those guidelines, so, um, and so, for, for an organization like ours, the, the cross-subsidy that we've talked about a lot tonight is necessary, we're, we're like a social enterprise, we, we, um, we have to cross-subsidize with these new buildings, our older buildings, we don't, we can run them very inexpensively, and so any dollar we save is a dollar that can shift the balance from R G I type of homes to low end, uh, from, from low-end-of-market homes to R G I homes, and saving half a million dollars on a project would really shift the percentage of units that would be R G I from low-end-of-market, our mission isn't to do low-end-of-market, we do it in the new buildings only because there's no other way, even with government funding, to have a hundred percent, to a question I think, uh, Counselor Carr asked earlier, I don't know of a not-for-profit can build a hundred percent, uh, social housing, uh, like R G I, in, even with government funding. Uh, there will end up being at least thirty, and probably more like fifty to sixty percent of something closer low-end-of-market in order to cross-subsidize. And because of that back and forth in the letter of inquiry stage, we estimate it would save at minimum a year per project, and in some cases, probably closer to two. So, for example, the first project you all approved at public hearing last, I think it was July, we're now just weeks out from demolition and starting construction. If we could go back in time and have this amendment in place, we'd probably be a few weeks away from opening that building. So, i- 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 you know, the kind of housing I think we all agree that we need the most in this crisis, it would just expedite that, um, that process. Um, the only thing, and again, others have pointed this out, the only thing I would say is, I think that if, uh, the counselors and, and the mayor and myself twenty years from now got together and walked by some of these buildings, I think our big regret would be six stories wouldn't seem big enough. I think it's not bad today, a lot of the financial modeling of a building shows that five, six stories, um, as Paul said earlier, is kind of a nice break-even point from a financial modeling point of view, but costs are only going up, and, um, I don't think that'll be true forever, and I think this is the kind of housing we want to invest in, so I would push for eight or even ten stories, which just gives flexibility, it's not to say all not-for-profits will suddenly build eight or ten stories, many will still build four to six, but just that, uh, that flexibility would allow the not-for-profit to create more financial sustainable models as they build housing. Um, and so, uh, I think, I think what's a, that, oh... Um, and so, uh, I think, I think what's, oh, okay. So, the only other, so I think that really does, the only points I would make in answer to some of the questions that came up earlier that I heard are that I don't believe this would expedite not-for-profits buying apartments, land and apartment buildings are just simply too expensive. This wouldn't change that factor, and for us at least, I don't pick a wood for any not-for-profit. So, I'll stop there.
You do have council, uh, four questions, questions from four councillors, starting with councillor Bly, up to five, please.
Excellent.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, hi, thanks so much for being here. I have a couple of questions, and the first I'll ask is actually reflecting back your last comment there around pushing to eight to ten stories sort of in a future context would be more appropriate. So, I, it just sort of flagged for me that I'm being bright-eyed and well-known in the not-for-profit housing sector. I wonder if, under what condition are you going to bring an application forward and go through the rezoning process to reach for that eight to ten stories when you know you could actually skip that process if this policy was to pass and build at six stories? So, so I'm trying to understand, like, under what conditions are you going to sort of absorb some of that time delay and pursue a greater density?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, I think it would be based on the financial modeling of the project. So, if we, you know, I'm imagining, but if we had a project that penciled out at six stories and it was viable, but at eight stories it would be more viable, to skip two years and half a million dollars, we probably would just go for six stories. But if a project really didn't make sense at six stories, like, the only way to make it viable is to build more density, then at that point, so it'd be, the financial modeling of a project would probably trigger what we do. And, you know, with rising costs, it's just, it's gonna end up creeping closer to eight stories over time. It's just, I, I don't see a way around it.
And so, how much does rising material housing, or housing material costs play into that as one of the conditions?
It's both labor and materials. Like, right now, we're focused on material, like you asked earlier about softwood lumber, like, it's a tricky thing to land. So, right now, if we had to buy lumber for one of our projects now, the current estimate is it would add a million dollars to the cost of a project. But we're not buying the lumber today, and our hope is, and the people we talk to in the, in the, in the sector, or in that sector, say, it's possible it will come back down, so we're not going to buy until we have to. So hopefully, some of that will come back down, but you never know. So, it's just, who would have saw that, seen that coming? So, it's just a matter of, I've never seen anything go down, right? Everything's always being pushed up. And we have higher standards. We're building to, 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 to higher environmental standards and everything like that. So definitely, all those things add costs, and a lot of them are worthwhile.
Okay. Do you remember the recent rezoning through Brightside on East Twelfth Avenue?
Yeah, that was the one we did last July, yeah.
Yeah, can you remind me the height of that building?
That's six stories.
So that's six stories. So, so what I'm hearing then is that would have, because the rezoning process was the same for that particular project, if penciled out as six stories, we likely would have just seen that, that project be built maybe even two years faster if, if it didn't, if this policy was to pass and the, everything was the same, Brightside wouldn't have pushed for eight to ten. Because the reality was the conditions at that time was the same, whether it was six, eight, or ten. So it was basically just came down to what, what penciled out.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, helpful. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Dejanova, up to five.
Thanks so much. I'm just wondering, when it comes to cross subsidy and looking at those models, do you think that, that the city of Vancouver goes far enough? That this is, I mean, we're looking at this specific item tonight, but under the current conditions, could Brightside operate? Knowing that sort of, I guess, maybe, you know, I'd like to know if you agree or not, twenty-five years in a new building is kind of what I would call the sweet spot. And when you sort of hit the, you paid down enough in your costs, your mortgage was low enough, that you'd be able to offer the units for, for rents where the nonprofit wasn't needing to cross subsidize or fundraise for those units?
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. So, I think a lot of studies show, and, and back in the early part of the two thousands, Brightside did buy apartment buildings. We can't really afford to do that now. And a study shows that compared to local rents, those units in our building, in our buildings stayed much, much lower and much more, actually became more affordable over time compared to incomes and compared to the market. So, so you're right. Even our low-end-of-market units, over time, will start approaching tremendous affordability. But there is an initial, you're right, probably twenty, twenty-five-year period where they are, the cross subsidy is more required, it becomes less so over time.
Okay, and then if we look at these that are so old, that the maintenance costs are so high, do you start to see that down, that, that decline? Where, for, for instance, you, you know, Brightside would be putting out more money than perhaps you would in a building that was newer? Is that why you kind of do this, why you plan for the future and you're looking at this sort of, you know, decades out?
Yeah, I mean, it, sort of. I, I think that, you know, a building gets to end of life, and we don't want residents living in a building that has truly reached end of life. You know, pest problems start increasing, all sorts of maintenance problems. It still isn't, it, it's not necessarily that expensive to run, especially compared to a newer building, say, five, ten years old, that would have a larger mortgage and caring costs. But the reality is, we, if we don't refurbish the stock, then we're losing that stock. So we want to make sure we're renewing our stock, so we're not just building new, we're keeping good units on the market.
Okay, is it, is it fair to say to your comments, and really appreciate your presentation, that really what's going to help sort of, you know, bring more nonprofit housing into reality, isn't just these changes? It's gonna go beyond that? It's gonna be changes to development, building, and licensing as well, hand in hand with these changes?
Well, I think, I think the biggest thing is, like, I think Dan mentioned earlier, I mean, it's senior level of government funding makes the biggest difference. That's why we're seeing such an uptick. And we're in a pretty good place in this province between B C Housing and then C M H C. So, I would say that makes the biggest difference. I mean, things like this make it more attractive to redevelop-
City of Vancouver, sorry, but we're able to control the city of Vancouver, my apologies. That's what I meant.
Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, speaking about a, a slightly different topic, I mean, I think the fact that some of our older buildings, which have property tax exemptions, which are gonna lose those because not-for-profits don't get them anymore, is a bit of a frustrating thing that we're gonna end up increasing our operating costs every year, when those buildings right now, if they weren't being redeveloped, pay nothing. So I think there are other levers the city has to pull to support the not-for-profit housing sector.
Thanks so much. I see other councillors on with questions, and I have asked that question about nonprofits and tax exemptions. But I understand public hearing tonight, we have to be very focused on what's in front of us. So, I'll continue to ask those questions, and thanks for being here.
Thanks, councillor Bly, up to five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Hi, neighbour, how are you?
Hey, good. How are you?
Good, thanks. Thanks for joining us today. I know it's, it's been a long day, and it's also a pretty significant announcement from the province today with, they announced two billion dollars in, in funding for, or, uh, low-interest loans, I guess, to help the sector build. Um, so, uh, I'm, you know, I, I, I do like a lot of the elements of this policy idea, this amendment. And, you know, as I articulated earlier, and I know you and I have talked about this before, my, my big concern is around existing tenants of low-market rentals that find their buildings purchased by not-for-profit housing providers and then redeveloped through this opportunity that we avail, through, through this new zoning policy and through the provincial low-interest loans. And, and, and we're setting up this scenario. So, to that, our staff mentioned that, that they would work with the housing operators to sort of find solutions for folks who may not be eligible for income testing, or what, or not interested in income testing, or whatever the case may be. And where a one-month tenant relocation package worth of rent wouldn't really help them navigate their next role. I'm wondering where you see something like that playing out if it was in a Brightside-purchased new unit? And you don't actually have to answer this, I'm just curious if you have contemplated this kind of thing.
Yeah, and, and you and I have, have talked about this, and, and it'll, I'm sure, come up for discussion when that building you're talking about comes up for a public hearing, hopefully in June. So, I, I, I mean, I think a couple of things. I, I, I don't know that that issue is totally related to this amendment in the sense that apartment buildings in Vancouver are so expensive now that this change would not, I believe, expedite any not-for-profit I can think of to suddenly buy more. You'd have to put a whole, because even the C M H C money around acquisition doesn't include operating. And I don't think many not-for-profits could just afford to buy an apartment building. And, you know, even the ones we bought, like, the one that's coming up for public hearing, we've owned it for almost a decade. So it's not like we bought it and immediately turfed the residents or anything like that. We've owned it, we've been working with these residents for a long time, and some of them do not want to go into income testing. And so, we are working with the city and with these residents to try and find solutions. The balance is, for a project like ours to pencil, we can't, it's, the market, you know, compensation is steep. And there's a fairness factor, right? If you have two residents living side by side, one is low-income and doesn't get a payout, and one is moderate income and suddenly gets this big payout, like, we're just working through all those things. But the reality is, the, the city is looking at each individual building, and in some cases, each individual resident, uh, on its own merit. So, but I do not believe that, that, you know, saving half a million dollars in redeveloping isn't gonna spur us to buy a, a, you know, a twelve-million-dollar apartment building.
Okay. And, and have you, have you had experiences in this capacity where, where you've got, you know, legacy market rent, low-market rentals that now find themselves in, in non-market housing where you've redeveloped it? You've done a few projects recently.
So of our projects, only one is an apartment building to be bought, as I've said, like, almost a decade ago. And there are a handful of residents that we're, we're, we're working with and will need to continue working with to figure out what's fair. We are trying to find them comparable units out in the market, but it, it will be tough. And they don't want to live in social housing and subject to income testing in the future. So, we're just working, we're working through that, and that's part of the trickiness of dealing with a bunch of individuals.
Do you think there's a role the city can play in, in, in helping that?
Yeah, and they do. The, the city planners that deal with the TRP are, are very engaged in this process. So, the reality is like, you know, it's, it's tricky and a bit chaotic because you're dealing with people, but it, it is working so far. I mean, we'll see where it all lands once we finish all their, you know, relocations and figure this all out. But I, I do believe it's working, and I, I don't think, if, if, if there's a way to improve it, I do think that lives in the TRP rather than in this amendment, is my opinion.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Councillor Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thanks. And my, my first question, my questions really are about recommendations that you would have for, for making this proposal even more ambitious. Maybe not right now in these recommendations, but as for future steps. So I appreciated the, the suggestion of eight to ten stories. And I'm just wondering if you can help me understand, if council were to make these recommendations to, to not require a rezoning, but up to eight to ten stories, is there a concern that that would increase the, the land value, the market cost that you would need to pay if there were a future program where the community housing sector were able to acquire market buildings?
Hmm, that's an interesting point. I, I don't know enough about it off the top of my head to answer that with any confidence. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, I, unless there were major government programs that allowed not-for-profits to be able to afford the current purchase prices for apartments, I'm not sure that this would change the economics so much. Like, what's already unaffordable is, is, even if it becomes a little less affordable, it's still unaffordable. So I'm, I'm not sure it'll change that dynamic, but others may know that far better than I do.
Okay, I can ask that of staff too. And then, so, in, I guess, I'm hoping you can speak to, in a dream scenario for you, would it be that, that we would increase the, this proposal to eight to ten stories and then also expand at some other height to other zones of the city?
Yeah, that's interesting. I mean, certainly, like a previous caller said, in, in transit corridors and transit hubs, you know, we have something in Mount Pleasant that was the last project we had for rezoning, that it will be between two future Sky train stations that was twelve stories. So, I, I do think different, you know, different form factors are important to consider, especially, and, and I can't remember, I think a city staffer spoke to this earlier, that, that, you know, unless you get community housing fund dollars from B C Housing, which not all projects are gonna get, I wish they all could, but they just, they can't, then the creativity you need, even for C M H C, which doesn't have operating subsidy, which has very, very low interest rates and a grant component. But grant component is, is nice, but it's not, it's not as huge as I wish it was. And so, these different models allow you to figure out the different housing mix that will make a project pencil, so you can deliver some, if not substantial amounts of deeply affordable housing. So, the, the heights may not always be used. Like I said, some, some not-for-profits will still choose to do five or six stories. But the ability to have that flexibility, maybe in a transit corridor, or, or just some differentiation that would allow you to have different models. It just creates more innovation in the sector and, and allows self-financing models if and when good dollars from the federal government and provincial government might dry up.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense, and I appreciate hearing all of your thoughts on it and answering questions from so many of us. Thanks.
Yeah, my, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks. That's it for questions from council, so I'm gonna move to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thanks. We have Jill Atkey from B C Nonprofit Housing Association.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jill Atkey. I'm the CEO at B C Nonprofit Housing Association. I'm also a resident of Vancouver and live a short walk from one of the districts in question. I'm speaking in favor of the zoning amendments to the three district schedules, but I would also like to encourage council to, to think bigger this evening. So going from six, or rather, from four to six stories in these important zones will make nonprofit development more affordable, because housing providers can avoid the costly and uncertain process of rezoning. And we've already heard quite a bit about that this evening. Rezoning can add significant cost to new and redevelopment that impacts rents in nonprofit housing at the end of the day. The uncertainty also prevents some from even trying, which means fewer affordable homes in the city overall. William and Jason have both spoken to the cost and uncertainty barriers to building new affordable housing, so I won't go into those details. So, yes, six stories is better than four stories when it comes to affordable housing. But it really honestly, as I was going through the materials, it still feels like we're tinkering with the margins. And so, I'd like council to, to push a bit higher. New buildings in these zones will be part of our communities for generations. They will be home to thousands of Vancouverites, and they could be home to many more with additional density. These zones are well-served by transit and close to jobs and are ideally suited for additional density. I want to just mention a couple of examples in Grandview Woodland. So there's a twelve-story social housing building, or two buildings actually for seniors at Woodland and Third Avenue. Two buildings have been there since the early nineteen seventies. They're surrounded by single-family and low-rise, purpose-built rental, and they fit well within the community. There are two hundred units in these two buildings, rather than twenty to thirty units in the buildings that surround it. Another example not far from there is a building for seniors at Commercial and Adnac, also twelve stories. It's also been there since the nineteen seventies. It fits well with the low-rise development that surrounds it. And just a couple of blocks in significantly transitions into single-family, and it's still a good fit. Again, there are a hundred units in this building, rather than twenty, twenty to thirty units in the buildings that surround it. So, over the lifespans of those buildings so far, the buildings have provided affordable homes to likely several thousand more seniors than they would have if they were limited to the heights that surrounded them. It's either that council back in the nineteen seventies was very bold and approved these as rezonings, or they were permissible before these districts were downzoned, downzoned in the mid-nineteen seventies. Either way, these twelve-story buildings have been there since the nineteen seventies, and here we are, fifty years later, debating whether or not six stories- And here we are, fifty years later, debating whether or not six stories is too high. Those same buildings would face significant community opposition today through rezoning and would likely be scaled back through the process if a nonprofit had pockets deep enough to bring them forward in the first place. So, yes, I support the motion, I'd be happy if it went through. Uh, but I also think that the crisis we're in requires bolder action than the one proposed. If council wants to make a bolder commitment to community housing in our city, I would encourage you to allow for higher buildings than the current proposal of six stories. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Uh, I don't see any questions for you, so I just want to thank you so much for, uh, calling in this evening. I'm going to go to the next speaker, who is, uh, Tom Armstrong.
Mayor and council, can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Uh, thank you very much. So thanks so much for the opportunity to speak, uh, this evening. My name's Tom Armstrong, I'm the CEO of the Co-op Housing Federation of BC and the Community Land Trust Foundation. We represent currently more than a hundred co-ops in the city of Vancouver with more than six thousand co-op homes and more than twice that many across the province. Um, in a few minutes, you're going to hear from the executive director of our community land trust, who is going to share with you a concrete example of the good outcomes you'll be able to achieve by adopting that, uh, staff recommendation. So I guess that ends the suspense. Uh, you're probably not surprised, I'm here to speak in favor of the report. Um, I'm also a resident of Vancouver. Um, you know, but first, I, I want to compliment the city staff team uh, for the effort they made to reach out to the community housing sector to seek our views. We really appreciate being consulted on matters that are so important, uh, to our community. But, you know, and speaking to the report, the words I want to focus on are initial step. Uh, that's what this is, and, and it's how we should read it. Um, you know, I've seen the tweets from people who say, oh, this is the end of democracy as we know it, and from others who say it's so timid as not to be worth the trouble. But of course, it's neither. Uh, in, in practical terms, this is a great start in a direction that we should have moved, uh, some time ago. And, and I say that because co-op and nonprofit housing is an all-too-scarce and valuable resource. But most of it was built in the seventies and eighties under federal and some provincial housing programs. And eventually, all of it will be redeveloped. And we, we know it needs to be greener, more accessible, and serve more diverse populations. But none of that can happen at current densities. Even with free land, a, a simple one-for-one unit replacement is unlikely to be viable, especially at the levels of affordability that you and I want to see preserved. Um, so to, to leave the current system in place is just to make it that much more difficult to achieve the goals we all say we support, uh, especially given the conditions attached to some of the housing programs at senior levels of government. There, everyone says time is money, but, but no one blinks, no one blinks when a year or two is added to a redevelopment because it has to go through a rezoning process. When you hear from my colleague at the Community Land Trust in a couple of minutes, you'll hear exactly how much that can impact the most modest redevelopment proposal. And, you know, let's be clear, this is a modest proposal. It's, it's really the least you can do to make it more likely that existing co-op and nonprofit housing can be redeveloped over time to preserve affordable homes in affordable communities. So, you know, I just want to say, let, let's do this now, let's do it together, and then let's ask ourselves what more we can do. So I just thank you for your time, uh, tonight, and, uh, I know it's been a long day and a long evening. Um, I urge you to, um, to adopt this, uh, recommendation so we can get on to doing bigger and bolder things together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, there are no questions for you, so I am going to, uh, move on to the next speaker. We've got, um, one second here. We have, uh, Jeanette Jones, next, speaker number four, Jeanette Jones.
Can you hear me?
Sure can, up to five minutes, please.
Okay, I'm not, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm not speaking either for or against these specific zoning and development bylaw amendments to the RM three and RM four zones. Instead, I want to focus on some of the larger questions that these proposed changes are attempting to address. For the past thirty years, senior levels of government have made very little investment in housing. We watched housing prices climb astronomically during that time. Vancouver has become one of the most unaffordable cities in the world, mainly due to the cost of housing. We've seen more and more residents leave the city. Providing housing that is affordable to them is not something that the city of Vancouver has been able to do alone. Recently, senior levels of government have announced that they are prepared to invest money in social housing. It has again become possible for housing providers, nonprofits, co-ops, and governments to actually build badly-needed non-market housing. And since no one is sure for how long this money will be available, everyone is eager to access it as soon as possible. This new money is a major game changer. It's important that in our understandable rush to make up for years of social housing neglect, we remember to look at the whole picture. These are some of the questions that I believe we need to consider in all discussions of social housing. Question one, what trade-offs are we willing to make in order to create affordable housing? We've heard that even with government subsidy, building housing that remains affordable over time will require some changes in existing regulations. But which standards should change, and by how much? For example, are we prepared to accept greater height if it results in more open space and less shadowing, as well as more affordability? Should we specify minimum unit sizes to ensure livability? What place should be given to good design for social housing projects? The amendments being proposed today reduce the family unit requirement from the fifty percent specified in community plans to, quote, thirty-five percent family units where possible. Is this acceptable? I note that phase three of the Vancouver Plan, uh, to take place in August to December twenty twenty-one is titled Making Choices. An in-depth evaluation of these kinds of trade-offs needs to be a part of that public consultation. Question two, and this has been already discussed, what is the balance between retaining existing housing that is less dense but relatively affordable and redeveloping those sites to create more but smaller units that will likely be less affordable? Are we incentivizing redevelopment of our most affordable existing housing stock? Question three, where should new housing be built? At present, most non-market housing is concentrated in areas of the downtown peninsula and in parts of Kitsilano, Fairview, Mount Pleasant, Strathcona, and Grabu- Grandview Woodland. Redeveloping existing sites at greater densities will only dense, will only increase the concentration in those relatively small areas. Should social housing be spread across the city? Would that help to make individual neighborhoods more diverse? Question four, how will the necessary housing policy changes relate to existing community plans? Even the most recent community plans do not provide adequate guidance for the construction of large amounts of social housing. If the recently announced provincial and federal funding is making it necessary to update those community plans, how will that be done? Will residents be given the opportunity to discuss which trade-offs they want to make to enable the construction of more social housing? When new guidelines are set, will they be clear and will they be adhered to? The words "where possible" or "where practical" appear several times in the guidelines attached to these amendments. I recognize that staff are still feeling their way on some of these issues, but those words make me nervous. Vancouver residents are glad to see increased funding for social housing. Let's make sure that this new money helps to create a better city for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You do have a question from Counselor Carr, uh, Counselor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And thank you very much for sending your question, or, or, um, actually, your answer to those questions, but your, um, presentation into us by email as well, that was very helpful. Um, so some of the questions are ones that I think are, you know, more appropriately directed at staff or at council itself, but some, I think, are, are really directed at people like you. So you don't need to answer these questions, but I am curious where you land on your first question, uh, for example, are we prepared to accept greater height if it results in more open space, less shadowing, as well as more affordability? Where do you stand on that one?
Um, well, I, as they say, the devil is in the details, but I would certainly be prepared to look at it.
Okay, it's, um, so far in the discussions with speakers, um, some have said, you know, we should be contemplating, maybe not in this particular, uh, report, um, instead of recommendations, but, but maybe in the future, and maybe even now, um, going above six stories. Is that, would that be your same answer if it was more than six stories?
I would be very reluctant to actually answer that until I'd seen, um, what was being proposed.
Oh, totally, totally.
And then, of course, yeah, and of course, it also depends on whether you are, in that case, talking about, um, a rezoning or, um, a conditional application like we're talking about tonight.
Right, okay. Um, thank you for that, uh, um, and I totally understand the answer. Um, another one of your questions, should social housing be spread across the city? Uh, would that help to make individual neighborhoods more diverse? Uh, where, where would you land on that question?
Well, I don't live in any of these, uh, neighborhoods that have a real concentration of social housing, but I would be prepared to accept more in my neighborhood.
Is it Norquay, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, in terms of, uh, trade-offs, another one of your questions, um, uh, I was very intrigued by your idea about the guidelines and, um, the, the words, "where possible" or "where practical", um, and you're worried that, that it's not very, uh, the guidelines aren't very precise or specific. Are there any particular, um, guidelines that you think really should be precise and not so variable with language like "where possible" or "where practical"?
Um, well, the two instances that really caught my attention, one was the unit mix, the family unit mix, which I've already mentioned. And in fact, I'd even go further and say the unit mix should be the same as it is in BC Housing guidelines, which is fifty percent and thirty percent is two-bedroom and twenty percent is three-bedroom. Because right now, we have no specifications at all for three-bedroom. And the other, the other place is, uh, the setbacks. If you look at those guidelines, the front setbacks, the side setbacks, and the rear setbacks are all described as being, um, things for which, uh, consideration will be given to reductions under certain circumstances. Uh, one of them is if a daycare center is, is in question. And of course, I mean, I have no question, no problem with additional set, you know, varying the setback because of the daycare center. But other, the others are very, um, very fuzzy. If I can bring them up here, um, you know, they're, they're saying, they're saying things like, uh... Oh, having trouble. Anyway, um, they were saying things like, uh, you know, to provide more livability for the units or to increase the amount of social housing. You know, very vague things that could cover almost anything. I'd like to see those be a little more precise.
Right, okay, very much appreciate your taking the time and thoughtfulness in terms of, uh, of the questions you posed here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much, you do have questions from Counselor Boyle, too?
Yes, just a quick question, I was intrigued, uh, to hear you say that, um, you would support more social housing in your neighborhood as well. Uh, and I just wondered, um, what that might look like to you if council were, for example, to, um, to say, uh, go through a similar process to this, but looking at, uh, allowing up to, um, four or six stories of, uh, social or non-market housing across, uh, across all of our residential districts? Um, if that would be something you would support?
I'm sorry, did you say across all residential districts?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, okay, um, well, in our neighborhood, we do have an existing community plan, which is ten years old. So if it, if they are putting more social housing in my neighborhood, I would like to have this discussion that I was talking about that said, you know, what kind of trade-offs do we need to make to get this social housing? And I think most neighborhoods that already have a plan that is fairly recent, um, would take that, that same position. We don't really want to have conditions imposed on us, and it, it may not be the same in every neighborhood. Um, but I think everybody should be given the opportunity to say, in order to build more social housing in my neighborhood, what kind of trade-offs are necessary, and which ones am I prepared to make? And I think those trade-offs need to be, um, outlined very carefully in any sort of tra- uh, planning process. Because very often, the, you know, consultation is basically a discussion, oh, do we need more social housing? Well, of course we do, but there's no real discussion of what the implications of that are.
Okay, so, uh, thanks for that. I'm just trying to, um, kind of get a more, uh, a clearer understanding of, um, I, I really appreciated you saying, yes, more social housing in my neighborhood. For you, what would those trade-offs, what, what, if, if the, kind of, finances are additional density, uh, you know, up to, I'm just making up four to six stories, but whatever that looks like in order to make housing that's, that's non-market and affordable. As a broad example, of course, there's lots of details to figure out, but is that something you see would be supportable to have non-market housing in your neighborhood?
Um, well, the, we do have a small, a small zone on residential streets close to Kingsway that is currently zoned for four-story apartments. And I would say, in the, you know, if you wanted to build social housing in that zone, you could certainly go to six. Um, now, when you're talking about zones that are currently low-density, um, zones for either stacked townhouses, row houses, um, four stories would probably be appropriate in that zone.
Okay, um, okay, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
And we don't have any single fam- we don't have any single-family zones in Norquay, so I, I can't really talk about that.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, that's it for questions, appreciate you calling in. Uh, council, it's just nine-thirty now, we do have, uh, quite a number of speakers left. And so I'm just giving you an early alert that, uh, we'll be coming back, uh, Tuesday, April twentieth at six P.M., uh, to finish this item. We, uh, have, uh, speaker number five out of sixteen, I think, Stephen Boas is next.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. Could I have my, uh, slides up, please?
Sure.
Okay, and, uh, for, uh, councillors, I have sent my slides in to the public comments, so they should be available there as well.
They're here, so they're up.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Okay, so, um, my name's Stephen Boas, I am a renter. I'm actually in the RM four zone, so I'm directly affected. And I'm actually afraid that, uh, maybe where I live, uh, it can get lot-assembled and, uh, affected, uh, by this change in policy. Uh, I'd like to actually talk about two things that previous speakers said. And just for the record, uh, Adnac and Commercial, uh, is, uh, CD one ninety-seven. There is a tall-story building there, but it has a floor-space ratio of two-point-two because it's such a large site. And the C-two zoning along Commercial Drive is a mix of three FSR and two-point-five FSR. So you can actually do two-point-five FSR, which is the density that's being requested by this change in a four-story zone. The other thing I wanted to mention before I go on to my slides is that fifteen eighty Vernon, like, temporary modular housing, was actually announced on September first of twenty twenty. It was referred on October sixth, and it was approved by council on October twenty-seventh. And the first building actually has been assembled there of the two on that lot. So it can happen very quickly. On, uh, my first slide here, I'm showing the citizens' assembly of the Grandview Woodland, uh, plan. And it was a very long plan, long process. And if you go on to the next slide, slide number- And if you go on to the next slide, slide number two, uh, there was a report. And the issue that I really have is that all this effort was put into this Grandview Woodland Plan, the Citizens' Assembly recommendations were not followed, and, uh, what will that bode with the Broadway Plan and, you know, why should people actually participate in it if their comments and their participation is not valued and ignored? Slide number three. If you look at the recommendations by the Citizens' Assembly, they are very, very clear that the existing four-story height should stay. They saw opportunities for extra density for, you know, these other uses, but that four stories would stay. Next slide, slide number four. City staff went against key recommendations by the Citizens' Assembly, and then they introduced this idea of having a six-story zone, against what the, uh, we wanted and with one, one, month, month notice for review. Next slide. Here you can actually see that city staff came back and said, well, you know, we're going to give you this pace of change policy that following three years, we're going to report back and you're only going to have, you know, maximum five new developments in the first three years of the plan and a maximum 150 existing market units, and we're going to keep renewing this and so on. And guess what? After three years, there was no review, there was no consultation, staff just kind of forgot about it, and it's not even mentioned in the staff report. They're, you know, cherry-picking what's in the Grandview Woodland Community Plan that planning staff actually imposed on the community, they call it a community plan, and now they're forgetting about the pace of change policy that was promised as a review of this six-story zone policy. So, uh, you know, that's a very, very big problem. If you go to next slide, number six, this is kind of the last open house, no, one slide back. No, no, go back, go back, but you're going, going forward. This is an open house on March 11th, 2020. You're going to see, um, couple of, um, yeah, that's right, last Vancouver Housing Strategy, uh, slide, you can see that areas that had recent plans were actually exempt because at least at that time, staff recognized that applying changes to recently planned community plans is not good policy. And this is kind of the last, one of the last open houses before pandemic hit and, and so on. So I actually don't believe that changes like this without proper consultation go, should go ahead. And I was not informed via postcard here, I don't believe anyone was. So there, there are thousands and thousands of renters living in these zones, were precariously housed in some cases. And, uh, I think, uh, the idea that some of these houses can be, uh, and rental buildings can be assembled and redeveloped by nonprofits partnering maybe, uh, with large firms, which I guess is the case with 8725 French Street, and I've tweeted out the, uh, rezoning sign there, uh, on my Twitter at hashtag Van Poly. And I believe that the 70% market rental, which is what I believe I heard from, uh, Mr. Garrison, I've tweeted him, he can confirm that if I heard incorrectly, that that's actually allowed by the city's definition of social housing as the maximum, uh, billable, will create a situation where you're going to have more, uh, potentially a loss of affordable housing. And I think this is very poor policy in terms of, uh, the environment of taking 35-year-old buildings and putting it in the landfill. I think we should preserve existing housing stock and look at ways of intensifying RS1 zones, character houses, uh, should be exempt, and heritage houses, but, uh, Vancouver specials and other places like, why not, why not assemble those and build three or four stories there for social housing? And you can do 2.5 FSR, uh, in the four-story zone. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, you do have questions from councillor Hardwick, though. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh, Steve, so the objections are, um, non-conforming with the Pl, Grandview Woodlands Plan in the, in the example that you're using, um, and the pace of change policy not being respected. Uh, but what about the justification that it's, it's, um, social housing? I mean, I, if, if we were talking six-story strata, you know, that would be one thing, but this is, this is social housing that we're talking about, notwithstanding the definitions being somewhat contradictory. So what's the real beef? Can you encapsulate it for me?
Well, the, my real beef is the way that, first of all, a community plan is being, being overwritten as not providing 100% shelter rate social housing, you know, 30% does not cut it, uh, for me. And I don't see that there has been a wholesome consultation, that consultation is, is exist, is nonexistent essentially.
Okay, so for consultation, um, they, third, only 30% real social housing under the definition, and what was the, there was a 30%?
And, uh, I guess the environment, because we're, we're talking about houses that were built in, like, you know, the 70s to the 90s, and some of these, you know, buildings are 30, 35, 40 years old, they're perfectly good. And to take down these mature housing buildings and put them in the landfill is such a waste. And we should, you know, these are our treasured buildings for low-cost, affordable housing. We should look at expanding elsewhere, but not go after our most precious housing stock. I think, you know, that's very misguided and, uh, very much, you know, it doesn't make sense on so many levels to target the, the most vulnerable and, and the demo-victions that will occur, uh, because of this.
Okay, so, um, the, you're afraid, I, again, I find it very humorous when we talk about buildings of this age being past their, uh, best-by date, but, um, it's really then about the, the destruction of, of existing affordable housing that is, is at the heart of the fear. It's not the built form, it's not this, you know, height-massing, uh, that's being proposed, it's really the destruction of existing affordable housing.
Well, as a renter, I, I find that, you know, the most offensive part of, of this policy that's being brought forward, and also the fact that you can do the 2.5 FSR in four stories, and you can actually do seven stories in 65 feet as well, which is, it hasn't been mentioned by staff, and it's there in the bylaw that it's a dimensional measure and not a number of stories measure. So, so there are many things there as well.
Okay, I got it. Thanks very much for your time.
Thanks for listening.
Councillor De Genova, up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. Uh, just wondering, what, what do you exactly consider end-of-life for?
Well, I, I lived in Europe for a few years, and, and I remember visiting Vienna, but they had, uh, buildings, you know, from the 20s and the 30s, um, that were very well-maintained and many people living in them. I had friends in Vienna, so, you know, you can have 100-year-old buildings that are well-maintained.
Okay, I have family across Europe, Italy, Switzerland, and I understand it can be hundreds of years old, but our building standards are a little bit different than Europe, and often, you know, we don't build in stone and concrete. And wooden structures can last a little bit longer, but when we look at sort of the, the issues seismically, we're looking at that, we're seeing that with schools right now also. Uh, just wondered, I mean, when we look at the building standard that we have in code, under the B.C. Building Code, now Vancouver Building Code also, but what would you consider sort of end-of-life to be for buildings when it's unsafe or uninhabitable?
Well, I actually think structurally, uh, wood-framed buildings, whi, which are, you know, most of the ones that I'm talking about are many of them, I live in a wood-framed building. They're structurally, uh, very, very sound and regardless of, of the age because of the flexibility of wood and the fact that they were so well-constructed, uh, you know, in, in that era, even if that was like 80 years ago. So, so I think it's, it's very hard.
You don't have to answer any of my questions, but I was looking for a year, kind of, like a year mark for, like, is, are there a certain number of years you could give me as your example?
You know, I think this is actually an incredibly, uh, good topic for, like, research to, to go out and, and get the facts, because I, I think, it's going to vary by the actual building. So there, there will be differences from building to building in terms of, uh, you know, the seismic, uh, concerns and so on, um, so, uh, it's, uh, all I'm saying is that...
For buildings where there were seismic concerns, it is at the end-of-life, do you support, sort of looking at, at, uh, best and highest use for those?
Um, well, if, that's, you know, a very good question, and if you were to have to take a building down, I think, uh, you, you definitely have to, uh, look at how do you replace it as the wood frame? Do you do, you know, 2.5 FSR and so on? But I don't think that's going to really impact many of the buildings from the 70s and 90s of, um, you know, that vintage that we're looking at, uh, in the report by staff.
Not right now, but eventually it might. So I'd, I'd love to know, uh, if not now, later, when you, building sort of, uh, of that vintage reaches its, uh, its lifespan.
Yeah, that's, you know, great, great topic, uh, for research, and, you know, I'd love to find out more about, uh, you know, the active research that's going on in that area.
Thanks very much. That's all my questions.
Thanks, uh, no more questions, uh, for you, so thanks, and we're going to move on. Uh, we're at, uh, 9:40, uh, council, we're at speaker number six, David Eddy. David Eddy, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Hello?
Up to five, hi, we can hear you, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Okay, uh, good evening, um, and thanks for, uh, allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is David Eddy, and I'm the CEO of Vancouver Native Housing Society, a position I've held for the past 20 years. I'd like to acknowledge that I'm speaking to you from the ancestral and unceded territory of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh nations. I thank them for having cared for this land that is now caring for me and my family. I'd like to voice my support for the proposed bylaw amendment to allow development of up to, uh, six stories of social housing in some of the city's, uh, multiple dwelling districts. Uh, in fact, I would, uh, support Jill Atkey's position, and I think his name was Rob who first spoke about going as, as high as eight stories if, uh, council wanted to, um, step out on a limb, uh, sort of speaking. Um, so, um, Vancouver Native Housing Society opened the doors of its first building on East 8th Avenue in Grandview Woodland in 1985, and today we own or operate 20 properties across the city. Nine of our properties are zoned RM4 and would likely qualify for the proposed exemption in the future. BNHS is currently planning for the redevelopment of two of our Grandview Woodland properties from three to, into six-story rental apartments. These buildings would provide housing at rates per the affordability requirements of B.C.'s Housing's 2020 Community Housing Fund call, which we applied to in January, uh, 2021. We're hopeful that council-supported this amendment being considered tonight will allow us to advance one or more of these projects to redevelopment. BNHS anticipates significant potential benefits to the projects in terms of schedule and budget should this amendment be approved. For example, based on previous experience, our team estimates this amendment would advance the timeline of each project by about nine months. And by not being required to rezone, the savings associated with each project is approximately $385,000 per site. This represents a reduction in not only upfront development costs, but also a lower, a lower total ongoing subsidy request from B.C. Housing by about $30 per unit per month, or approximately $20,520 per building per year. In other words, removing the requirement to rezone for these projects would provide very real and meaningful support to these and up to six other future projects in the BNHS portfolio that meet the proposed criteria. I also believe it will help to attract a successful response to current and future provincial funding applications. I can assure you that the funding and time resources that these changes would save us would then be returned to the city in the form of more safe, secure and affordable housing for Vancouver's current and future urban indigenous residents. BNHS is very much in support of, of these proposed changes and, and would be even more happy if the city decided to, uh, go up to, uh, eight stories, uh, to the zoning bylaw. We hope to see this and similar amendments approved for city districts, enabling us to speed up the delivery of much-needed affordable housing to Vancouver's urban indigenous peoples. Thank you, uh, for hearing me tonight.
Thank you so much. Uh, councillor Swanson, up to five minutes for questions.
Point of privilege, Mayor Stewart, it's councillor De Genova. If you could add me to the list, my remote desktop isn't connecting, thank you.
Thanks for, uh, coming to speak. Um, I think you said that if this passed, we'd have, uh, you'd, um, save about $385,000 per site, and that this would translate into $30 a month in rent? Is that right?
It would, it, it would translate to a savings of $30 per unit per month.
So rent could be $30 a month lower than it would be without this change?
You could look at it that way, but, uh, be, probably not, because B.C. Housing goes, uh, on, based on, um, if you're talking about shelter rate, it, it would remain the same, uh, unless there was, government decided to make those types of policy changes. But what, what it's saying is it would cost the city and B.C. Housing, uh, that much less.
Do you think you could actually get shelter rate? Do you think you could actually get shelter rate units in these buildings?
Oh, absolutely, we, we will, for sure. No question about it.
So if it went up to eight stories?
Yeah.
What would be the savings? Have you, have you figured that out?
Well, I, I haven't done that math, uh, and there's people much better qualified than I to do that, but, uh, you could extrapolate, I, I don't know. Uh, got someone sitting beside me who's rapidly working her calculator, uh, maybe, uh, we can come back to that if we got five minutes here.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so Tom Armstrong said earlier, uh, time is money, and it's really, what is huge in these redevelopments is the cost of money. Uh, it's not so bad these days because of the very low interest rate, but, uh, they're not going to stay low, and, and those, those are, are going to, uh, increase significantly. But what is brutal, what is absolutely brutal and life-sapping and energy-sucking is the amount of time, uh, that you have to go through to get a proposal, uh, through the process. So knocking off nine to 12 months in, in this jurisdiction, you know, and, and Vancouver's got a lot better in the last two years. Um, but, you know, uh, it's just, you know, for people who... Yeah, and, and for people who are doing the development, and I, and I'm talking about nonprofit folks, you know, there's, there's a lot of keeners out there who are champing at the bit to build more housing, and it just, it, I think it drives some of them away knowing how long it takes for the processes.
Okay. Is that calculation finished yet?
Nancy, how's it going there? Not done yet.
Okay, that's, all right. If you could slip it in and hand it to somebody else.
Uh, Gina, I'll send you, uh, an email.
Okay, thanks. You take care.
It, it does need to come to everybody, uh, if it's going to be considered in the public hearing, so perhaps, uh...
Oh, sure.
Speaker could send it to the clerk.
Sure, I, I can do that.
That'd be great, thanks. We do have councillor De Genova on the, uh, queue, I'd ask you some questions. So councillor De Genova, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thanks so much, and my connection's weak, so I've turned my internet off, but I'll call in if there's an issue. Thanks so much, David, for, uh, for your presentation this evening. I'm also just wondering if this maybe, um, what, what's before us tonight might offer you some more flexibility, being able to serve your client group and provide more housing options? If you could elaborate on that a little, and also maybe, um, in talking about sort of subsidies, and sometimes, you know, uh, through government programs, if you feel that your organization has to pick, look at some creative fundraising through, uh, uh, you know, cross-subsidies?
Yeah, so I think most of us in the sector, especially those, uh, you've heard earlier, uh, like Tom and Jill and, and others who have, you know, portfolios of, uh, of a significant size, we're, we're always, uh, looking for ways, and, and it's really a, uh, a, a game of math in some cases to, uh, um, to pair off, uh, dollars or, on, on projects, or to find innovative ways to, uh, generate revenue through social enterprise, such as our, our hotel or, and art gallery, uh, which we actually, um, we have one building in Vancouver where we provide the entire subsidy for the residents through profits of a social enterprise, uh, to social enterprise... two social enterprises, a boutique indigenous art hotel and an art gallery. So that's an example. There's many other ways to go about doing this, and a lot of creative people in this sector who have devised ways of doing such. So, and there's also, you know, if you're fortunate enough, I think someone earlier mentioned some organizations, I think they mentioned the YW, that has a great philanthropic program that certainly generates a lot of revenue for them. So it's something that nonprofit housing providers and housing developers are constantly trying to hone skills at doing, and like I say, there's a list as long as your arm of ways to do it.
Yeah. And I know a little bit about that from my work in non-market housing, but I'm just wondering, I mean, specifically looking at what this would do for your organization, and also talking about sort of municipalities and how, you know, time is money, and that's what I'm hearing, and it's one of the reasons that, you know, I'd move forward some motions. I've been really proud of what our staff have brought forward, you know, in several ways, their own thoughts and ideas, the short program also.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know...
Can you talk to that? Do you think that needs to be expanded hand-in-hand with this?
Oh, yeah, I was part of the provincial deep dive into development processes and, you know, made my position pretty clear at that time. But I really think folks like Dan Garrison at the city and others now are also honing their skills and looking at how we can create policy that allows a greater amount of social and affordable housing. So for example, us going from three stories to six stories, well, you know, we're going from, the two buildings I talked about in my presentation, we're going from 27 units to 57 units in each one of them, so that is more than double. So, I mean, that's the clearest case of benefit from this kind of thing. You're creating more than double the number of social housing units in the second-least affordable city in the Western world. You know, Vancouver, for the last 10 years, has scored in the top five least affordable cities in terms of, cities in terms of housing market in eight countries, including US, UK, Australia, Singapore, Hong Kong. And, you know, in the last couple of years, Vancouver is second only to Hong Kong in lack of affordability in the housing market. So, yeah, it's a great help, and I'd like to see it go to eight stories.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. I know what you do on a shoestring budget, so really want to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Councillor, we're at 9:53, we're definitely not going to get through all the speakers this evening, so again, when we recess, we'll come back Tuesday, April 20th at 6:00 PM. But with the eight minutes we have left, let's try one more speaker, Lewis Falegas.
Well, hi, Mayor and councillor, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I hope you can hear me, and could I have my slides up, please?
Okay.
Okay, I'll just wait till I see them.
Clerks are just putting them up now. There we go, they're up. Please go ahead.
Okay, I can see you, but I can't see my slides yet.
They are all up on the public screen.
Can you see them, Mr. Mayor?
Sure can, yep, we can see them.
Okay, then I'll get started. I am a homeowner in Vancouver for over 30 years. I'm qualified to practice as an architect, planner, building technologist, and urban design specialist. I've been an advocate for social housing my entire professional life and longer, but I oppose this recommendation. If we could see slide one, I still, here we go. There are three areas of concern with the staff report. The six-story buildings are too big, they cause too much, they support the wrong plan for our city, and they ignore better and best practices. We look at the too-big proposition. On the one hand, the staff report ignores unintended consequences such as cost overshadowing, crowding, adjacencies, which would be when you put a six-story building right up against a 20-foot lane, and then the building 20 feet away now has to contend with a 60-foot wall that wasn't there before, maybe it's an 80-foot wall, defensible space, and failing to support high levels of social functioning. On the other hand, I think this idea of fast-tracking social housing has a lot of merit to it, albeit that we have some problems with the definition of what social housing is. Could I have the next slide, please? The second concern surrounds the fact that when we move from three and four stories to six stories, the costs increase, and these six-story buildings end up costing too much. The Coriolis report that staff quotes says that the savings in terms of time from fast-tracking the six-story building, the savings in terms of money is $400,000. It's not $150,000 a month, it's not $500,000, the report says $400,000 for the entire project. Yet, when you move from human-scale three- and four-story buildings to six-story buildings, you bring in a whole bunch of fitting costs that most people, and certainly most of the speakers referred tonight, don't seem to understand. For one, you need to put in an elevator. I can do three stories, I could even do four stories, and have all the suites be ground access with their own front doors, either on a courtyard or on a sidewalk. With a six-story building, I have to put in an elevator, I have to put in stairs, exit stairs, and I have to put corridors. Now, the stairs and the corridors take up 15% of the total floor area of the building. That is 15% of space that if we were doing human-scale buildings could actually house people. Now they're housing corridors or stairwells. And the other thing is that when we stick to three- to four-story construction, we don't have to put in suspended slabs. And people don't really understand this, but when we have different uses, like, say, residential and retail, we have to put in a one-hour fire separation between those two uses according to the building code. And that means a suspended concrete slab. And the suspended part is important because that means that there's a whole bunch of wood form where it has to go up until the slab is cured, and then it comes down and gets thrown out. So very expensive. And then if you have a six-story building with retail in it, if you have a six-story building that only has 30% social housing units, you're going to require underground parking. And each level of underground parking requires excavation, which is very expensive, and it also requires more suspended slabs. We've heard from many of the speakers that they want to see eight- and 12- and 14-story buildings. Well, when you increase from six stories to eight, 12, and 14, you no longer can do wood construction, so now we're looking at an entire building made out of concrete, every slab is suspended, and of course, the elevators are taller and the stairs are longer, and so on and so forth. So that $400,000 that you might save by fast-tracking a six-story building, you're going to give up and more, just simply by building elevators and suspended slabs. Could I have the next slide, please? The other point that's really not understood is that people are saying that you can get, you know, 120 units in a six- or eight-story building, you only get 60 units in a three-story building. But we're really talking about FAR or FSR.
And you just have 10 seconds left.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Let's go to the next slide then.
No, I think that's, you're at your five minutes, and we are at 9:58 for the evening.
Okay, thank you.
So we are, councillor, actually 9:59, so I am going to need a motion to recess.
Don't move, councillor De Genova.
Thank you, you have a second, there.
Councillor Hardwick.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, nay. Thank you, councillor, we are recessed until, what did I say? Tuesday at 6:00. Yeah, thanks so much, been a long day. Thanks very much, councillor, very much appreciate it, we'll see you shortly.
Point of information?
We're at a session now, but...
I just would like to know whether we'll be able to ask questions of the last speaker on Tuesday.
If he calls back in, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.